You're sick?
Oh yeah. Just getting better though. Been about a month, right here.
All right. We're on, it's about 7:03 on Tuesday, December 5th. I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals business meeting. Before we get started, let me just read the following rules and procedure. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting in accordance to rules laid out in chapter 48 of the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk of this meeting, and this meeting is being taped recorded for the purposes of taking minutes. The first order of business is our monthly finance update. So Pat, you wanna, wanna take it away?
So all we have right now is the revolving account. The only things, the new entries are two from the last meeting, which was 11:07, is a deposit for this hearing tonight, and revolving hours ending 11:18.
So not a ton of activity since last night.
No.
All right.
They gave you the postage meter, which has the mellow butters. Tonight's butters are the only, actually that was from October. There's only one entry there. So we got $141 left. You have to keep a $50 minimum. If the other two things that are coming in, then we're gonna have to put more money in just to keep that $50 minimum. So that's probably what should be in your head.
Okay. You don't have any warrants tonight, right?
No.
For expenditures, okay.
Nope.
So we have the business and hearing minutes of November 7th, 2017. Who abstains from these? Anybody?
Uh, no, just Gina. Sharon did make a change by email. I made that change.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the November meeting.
November 7th?
November 7th, 2017.
Okay. Is there a second on that? Thanks. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. That motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the public hearing for 2:03 East Main Street for the same day?
That is the...
That was a business meeting.
He didn't do both?
Oh. You did both? Okay.
Oh, he did both.
All right, we did both. Good.
And then the only other thing, all the correspondence there is the hearing, and I put in under "other" in the very back last few pages, just a contact sheet, just so everybody can check their phone numbers and emails if anything changed.
Anybody have anything else they wanna add at this point for business? We have anything else as...
Oh, good, Pat.
No other items on the agenda. The only thing I wanna bring up is email. I know, Paul, you were having a hard time with the town email. You got it? All right. Were you able to get it on your phone? You told me.
Yep. Yeah, if you need help, I can.
I need help. I'll still have IT.
As do I.
All right.
Yeah.
Love a little session.
I have the settings for the server and everything.
All right, good. It's nice to be able to at least monitor it. All right, do I hear a motion to close the business meeting for December 5th?
I move to close the business meeting for December 6th.
All right, so, thank you, Dave. All those in favor? Any discussion on this? None? All those in favor, aye. Sorry. Opposed? None. That motion carries. Business meeting is closed, and we will reconvene at about 7:30 for tonight's hearings.
Okay, we're back on. It's about 7:35 on Tuesday, December 5th. I'd like to first start by reopening the hearing for 203 East Main Street. That was continued from November 7th. And we have correspondence here that I'll read to the Georgetown Board of Appeals dated November 14th regarding 203-8 East Main Street, a continuance request from G. Mallow Disposal Corp. Special permit application, C. 165, Sections 94, 81, 20 to 28, and 29 to 38. Dear Board members, on behalf of the applicant, G. Mallow Disposal Corp., I hereby request a continuance for this matter to the board's meeting of January 9th, 2018. Thank you for your consideration. And we have the legal notice that I have a motion to waive the reading of the legal notice since we've...
Motion to waive.
Thank you, Dave.
Second.
Sean, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to continue the hearing to 203 East Main Street?
Motion to continue the hearing for 302 East Main.
To January 9th.
To January 9th.
At 7:30.
2018.
Second.
Okay, Dave, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? That motion carries.
Did we do a motion to allow them to continue? Or did we just did a motion? We did.
We did, to continue, yeah.
I don't know if we need to say that. No worries.
All right. Okay, so at this time, I'd like to open the hearing for 34 East Main Street. And we're gonna start by reading the legal ad. Do you mind doing that, Sean?
Town of Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals, 34 East Main Street, 40B, comprehensive permit. The Town of Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 5th, 2017, at 7:30 p.m. The Georgetown Town Hall, 3rd floor meeting room, for the purpose of considering an application for a 40B comprehensive permit pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40B, 760 Code of Massachusetts Regulations 56 filed by Alan P. Olson, Sr. of 201 Pond Street, Georgetown, Massachusetts, to convert the existing structures, main building and detached barn at 34 East Main Street into a condominium building comprised of six one-bedroom units and two two-bedroom units for a total of eight units, of which not less than 25% or two units, one one-bedroom unit and one two-bedroom unit shall be restricted as affordable for low or moderate income persons or families to be constructed on the property located at 34 East Main Street, Georgetown, Massachusetts. And the RA Zone, as shown on assessor's map, 11A, Lot 118, containing approximately 43 acres of land area. This property is owned by Alan P. Olson, Sr. and Maureen Olson of 201 Pond Street, Georgetown, Massachusetts. Also found on the website for Massachusetts Publishers Association, Mass. Publishers Notice, File Number 1803.
Very good, thank you. All right, let me first start by introducing the members, starting on my right. Dave Twist is gonna be the alternate for this hearing. Sharon Freeman is the voting alternate. Dave Kapnis, Sean Dean, Paul Schillen, I'm Jeff Moore, we're all regular members. And Town Council, Amy Quessell. Did I pronounce it right?
Yes.
Thank you. So why don't you guys introduce yourselves briefly, and then we'll go on from there.
I'm Shawna Jamal. I am the attorney that has worked with Alan Olson and submitted and submitting the application.
Ray Gertner of RTG Architects of Ipswich, Mass.
And Rich Williams with Williams. It's where I just sit in the chambers.
All right, welcome all of you. Thank you for coming. I'm gonna first start off by, you know, for everybody's benefit, to just go over this hearing and where we are with the 40B process in Georgetown. And we have a couple of issues that we want to take care of. First of all, this is a 40B for everybody's benefit, which is under the Chapter 40B of the state affordable housing legislation. And the ZBA will be acting as the comprehensive permit granting authority in this case. So all of the issues that are in this application would be addressed by the zoning board. This is, this application is special for a couple of reasons, atypical, if you will, for a couple of reasons. First, it's a local initiative project, which means that it has the support of the town. There's a letter of support from the Selectmen, as well as the Affordable Housing Committees in Georgetown. So it is typically, it's called a friendly 40B, okay? Secondly, what's unique is that the town has met its minimum local needs of 10% for affordable housing. The SHI has exceeded 10%. And therefore, the town has certain rights, called safe harbor rights, which we can invoke as a board with written notice to DHCD and copy to the applicant, or vice versa, which allows us to have some flexibility, basically, in how we hear this case. We can either deny it outright, based on the fact that the town has met its local needs. We can accept it as presented in its entirety, or we can accept it with conditions that we choose, that we may so choose throughout the course of the hearing. We can also choose to deny any of the particular waivers in there, as we so deem. And because we've met that minimum 10%, and we reserve our safe harbor rights, there would be no appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee of the DHCD by the applicant. So that is a right that I think the town has sort of earned by virtue of the fact that we have met the minimum housing standard, at least. And it gives us certain flexibility going forward here. So we have, I've discussed this with Town Council, we've actually discussed it with the Applicant's Council as well, that what I intend to do, the board ought to intend to do, is go through a couple of procedural matters here and reserve our rights for safe harbor, and then determine whether or not we want to actually go forward with this hearing. My personal view is, we do want to go forward and hear this hearing, but it needs to be, you know, approved by the board at this time. So should I just go through and read each of these, I think, Amy, or?
Sure.
I should have...
Yes, I think that that will be an entire motion. It's, I apologize, it's a very long motion, but it's necessary. And there's just the, there's a couple of things the board has to determine.
Yeah, that's what I want to start with. First of all, Shawna, you have an affidavit, although Alan is here, so there's an affidavit in that you're gonna be representing him?
Correct.
Do you, I wanted you to acknowledge that for the record, so that...
Okay.
And I know Alan is now here. Hi, Alan.
He may not be here for subsequent...
He may not be here for the subsequent hearing, so...
For subsequent hearings, so we just wanted to make sure...
I don't have my hands on it right here.
That I did submit an affidavit.
Okay.
And a letter of authorization authorizing me to act on behalf of Alan Olson for 34 East Main Street project.
Thank you very much, okay. One of the things the board needs to do is, we need to determine that that the town has achieved one of the statutory minimum standards set forth in General Law 40B, specifically that the SHI inventory for Georgetown is currently 11.65%, which is greater than the 10% minimum.
And it's 11.61.
Oh, 6.1, I'm sorry.
And it's, we do have a, I did receive an updated SHI count dated 11/2, 2017.
Okay, thank you. We also need to determine that since the town has achieved the 10% statutory minima under 40B, that we may, at our sole discretion, elect to proceed with the full local hearing and ultimately approve the comprehensive permit, even though the safe harbor has been achieved. And under 760 CMR 5603, the board may elect to impose conditions upon the issuance of any such permit, and that no appeal from any such decision will lie. And we need to vote whether or not we want to proceed or not with the full local hearing. The board also needs to determine whether or not the applicant wants to request that the board proceed with a full hearing. Okay, so I guess we'll start, you wanna do a vote on each, so we're gonna make a motion, okay? So the motion is gonna cover all of these things.
Right.
Okay. And we're gonna ask the applicant whether they acknowledge for the record that we're proceeding in this manner.
So I think what I...
What else, what am I missing?
You just might, you might just want to run it, see if anyone has any comments regard, anyone on the board has any comments regarding going forward or not going forward? Before you make the motion.
Okay, so those are the key points. Does anybody have any comments at this point on moving forward, how to move forward, whether we ought to move forward? My recommendation would be, I know you've all read the here, the application, we've had a lot of information come through, supplemental information as well. This is a friendly 40B. I would have every expectation that the board ought to move forward with hearing, but we've also earned the right to reserve our rights, you know, under 40B, so...
Do you also plan to hear from the audience?
Absolutely.
Prior to start?
Well, the hearing's open. You mean, starting the hearing, or? Yeah, the hearing is open. We would immediately just continue from this point forward.
Another question is, if the board so decided that we were not going to grant all the waivers, do we make that known upfront to Mr. Olson and the council? Because then...
That would be a decision that we, as we go through the hearing, if we get to a point that's a stumbling block, or that we're not comfortable with, we can, point by point, decide that we're not comfortable with any particular aspect of that. Or, as we would in a typical hearing, impose conditions that get us, get us there, just as we would in a typical hearing. So as part of the final decision, however long this hearing may take, as part of that final decision, we would make that determination, line by line. So there would be a motion, or a series of motions and findings by this board for every aspect of the application. And if one of those waivers in there is not something we're comfortable with, then they will absolutely know it.
Would the board waive all its rights under the safe harbor provision if we move forward with the hearing?
Uh, no, that's the...
You're reserving your rights.
Okay.
Under the safe harbor. That's, that's what the motion will ensure. After the motion, the motion will direct the chair to issue a letter. The, to, we have to invoke our safe harbor within 15 days, and that letter will be sent within 15 days. That's reserving our right.
And those would be our conditions?
No.
As such, or?
The, what, what you're, what you would be doing is, you would be reserving your right by going forward to hear the application. And then, at the end of the application, you then can decide whether you want to approve. It would be just like any other 40B. You can approve it, you can deny it, or you can approve it with conditions. And by approving it with conditions, you are, that's, that's when you decide what waivers you would like to grant, which waivers you would like to deny. That's how you, so for example, if you decide that there's a waiver for site plan, site plan review, if you decide that you do not want to waive, you do not want to grant that waiver, then you would deny that waiver, and one of the conditions of the comprehensive permit would be that the applicant has to go to the planning board and get site plan approval. For Board of Health, if they have any waivers for local Board of Health, and this board isn't comfortable with granting a waiver, then they would, you would deny that waiver, and one of the conditions would be that the Board of Health has to approve any local variances or waivers. From my memory, from my recollection of the application, I think almost all of the other waivers are zoning-related waivers. So I'm not really sure they would have to go anywhere else but to the zoning board. So they would be waivers that generally would be before you anyway, I think. There, there might be the Water Resource Protection, there's that one.
We're the...
But without, yeah, so without getting into too many, you know, details, but that, so that, so that would be... So right now, essentially, you're deciding whether you want to invoke your safe harbor right now and deny the project outright, or if you want to actually hear the project, see what it's all about, and decide if it's, if the, you know, if the project is something that might be beneficial.
I happen to agree with Jeff, for the record. I think we should hear it out, hear from the others, and make decisions based on the information and feedback provided. For what it's worth.
Can I just, clarification on what you just said? I, I thought the safe harbor right was us declaring that we have met the minimum, and we reserve the right to impose the conditions, or is it that you choose safe harbor and deny outright?
It's, you, you choose safe harbor, and you can deny outright. It's one of, it's one of your options.
Or you choose safe harbor, and you hear it.
But we're reserving our right to safe harbor, is what we're doing.
So at any point, we can deny it?
Yes.
Ah, I got it, okay, yes.
Without invoking that right after 15 days, we lose it entirely, essentially, without, unless we provide written notice to the applicant in the DHCD within 15 days of opening this hearing?
Yeah.
That we intend to reserve or invoke these rights?
Yes.
After that, come the next hearing?
Yeah.
We lose that right.
I see, so safe harbor just preserves the right to deny outright at any point?
To reserve the safe, by reserving safe harbor.
Got it, I got it.
Many, many towns don't have this option because...
Because they don't meet the minimum.
They haven't met the minimum 10%. And then, one of the things, just to, just to remember, is that in 2020, the SHI numbers will all change because of the new, the new census will come out. And I, we, I have no idea what that number will be, and I don't know if 11.61 is a big enough cushion or not. It's just something to think about.
It's based on population, and as your population goes up, your affordable housing requirements go up?
Yep.
So theoretically, if you looked at the population of Georgetown over the past five to 10 years, you'd see the growth.
Yeah.
And then you could kind of project what the growth would look like?
Yep.
To 2020? And then, you could use the formula that they would provide you to figure out what that percentage would be?
And what you were...
They are projecting that most town, that every town will go significantly.
Sure, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I guess, is there any, anybody on the board that is not in agreement that we ought to proceed with the hearing? We're gonna make a motion to clarify this for the record, but people, you guys comfortable with proceeding?
Yeah, then we should preserve our rights and proceed with the hearing.
Are you okay with us acknowledging, you'd like to proceed with the hearing as well?
I, we would like to proceed with the hearing.
Yeah, okay, good. And you acknowledge that, and understand that the board in electing to hold a full hearing maintains its full rights to deny the application or impose conditions without the right of appeal to hack?
I do acknowledge that.
Okay, great. Can I bug you to do a little more reading?
Yeah, is this the motion?
It is.
So from here?
Move that and further move that.
Okay, a move that the board determined under 760 Code of Massachusetts Regulations 56.03, subsection 8A, that the board considers that a denial of the requested comprehensive permit under the application by Alan P. Olson for a project located at 34 East Main Street, or the imposition of conditions or requirements upon a requested comprehensive permit would be consistent with local needs as a matter of law. Two, I moved that the board determined that the town of Georgetown has achieved one of the statutory minimum standards set forth under General Laws, Chapter 40B, Subsections 20 to 23, and 760 Code of Massachusetts regs 56.03, subsection 3, because the town subsidized housing inventory or SHI, as maintained by the Department of Housing and Community Development, on the date that the application was received, was 11.61%. A copy of the SHI inventory maintained by the DHCD for Georgetown is attached to this vote. Third, I moved that the board determined that since the town has achieved the 10% statutory minima under General Laws, Chapter 40B, and 760 CMR 5603, subsection 1, the board, quote, "may, at its sole discretion, elect to proceed with the full local hearing and ultimately approve a comprehensive permit, even though the safe harbor has been achieved." And under 760 CMR 5603, subsection 8, the board may elect to impose conditions upon the issuance of any such permit, and no appeal from any such decision will lie. And the board voted to elect to proceed with a full hea, a full local hearing with no waiver of its right to deny the comprehensive permit or its right to impose conditions upon the issuance of any such permit with such denial or conditions to be deemed consistent with local laws as a matter, local needs as a matter of law. Further move four, the board determined that Mr. Olson requested the board proceed with the full local hearing despite the existence of the safe harbor. Move five, the board determined that Mr. Olson acknowledged for the record that Olson understands and agrees that the board in electing to hold the full local hearing maintains the full right to either deny the application or to impose conditions on any permit granted, and no right of appeal by Olson will lie from the decision. And Olson acknowledged that it waived any right of appeal under 760 Code of Massachusetts regs 5603, subsection 8A, to contest the board's assertion of the 10% safe harbor to DHCD. Six, I moved the board to elect to proceed with the full hearing with the board having the right to deny the application or to grant the application with conditions, and with the applicant having no right of appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee from the board's decision. And finally, seven, I moved that the board approved the attached written notice to the applicant with a copy to DHCD to invoke the 10% statutory minima and, and to authorize the chair to finalize and execute and send written notice within 15 days of the opening of the December 5, 2017, public hearing on the application. Do I have a second?
Second, okay, Dave's second.
Okay. I'm an attorney, so it's fine. I'm used to reading that stuff.
Okay, so, there's a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded by, by Dave. Any, any further discussion on this? You all set? Okay, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Sharon, you're the first voting member?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Dave?
Yes.
Shawna?
Aye.
Paul?
Yes.
And the chairman votes yes as well, so that's unanimous. Okay. Now we can move on. Welcome, everybody. This 40B hearing, okay. I will just go through a quick order of how this is going to proceed, and then we're going to jump right in and let you guys start with your presentation, okay? Which we'd like to get through tonight, not necessarily all of it, but we'd like to start and have you go through your, your whole deal. And we do have some folks in the audience. We also have some new correspondents. I don't know how long this is going to go tonight. I know a lot of people are, are here on their own free time. I'd like to give everybody in the audience the opportunity to, to speak and be heard tonight since they're, they're out here, and then if they don't have the chance to come at a later date, because these typically go more than one meeting, I'd like to allow them to do that. We'll also read new correspondents, and then we'll get into questions from the board, okay? Does that make sense, and then, and then from there? All right, so welcome. I know you've introduced yourselves, so have at it.
Thank you. Again, my name is Shawna Jamal, and we are here for the comprehensive permit. I, I believe you're all familiar with the property, but the Dunbar Hotel and Tavern is part of Georgetown's history, evidenced by the fact that it dates back to 1810. It has been a vacant eyesore in the center of town for quite some time. And the prop, the, the, the property hasn't been taken care of, and because the financial burden of renovating it was too high, and given the current conditions of the building, if it's not renovated, it is likely to collapse. And so, the restoration of the property will not only preserve a, a historic building, but it will also add character to the down, to downtown Georgetown and provide much-needed housing. Physically, the renovation will relate and enhance to the surrounding area. The building next door is a condominium building. Surrounding the property are single-family homes and commercial properties. The building will look like a single-family home, which has been there for years, but inside will be converted into condominium units. There are extremely limited condominium options in Georgetown. A lot of this has to do with the fact that the current bylaws preclude the construction of new condominiums. Specifically, the intensity of use schedule for residential minimum lot sizes prevents the building of any condominiums. Essentially, the only options for Georgetown residents are single-family homes and multifamily homes. Downtown is the perfect location for condominiums due to the close proximity to amenities and services, such as shopping, schools, parks and recreation, and transportation. I also reviewed the town of Georgetown's housing production plan of 2017, and it listed many things that also make this project perfect for Georgetown. It said that there are constraints in development, and due to the lack of public transportation leads to the new development downtown. So the fact that this property is downtown, and because of the lack of public transportation makes it the perfect option. The, the housing production plan also talked about affordable housing goals, and it stated that despite its efforts, however, the town continues to face challenges in meeting all of the community's affordable housing needs. The town's housing stock continues to lack diversity because it largely consists of single-family homes. In fact, only 0.9% of the housing stock is four-to-eight unit buildings. Georgetown does have 216 affordable units. However, only six of those units are for ownership, not for seniors. So this, again, this is why this project would be perfect. And I also reviewed Georgetown's housing production plan of 2011, and in 2011, they listed 34 East Main Street as a possibility for affordable housing development. And so, it, it, it has been seen as a possibility since at least 2011. And we are proposing to renovate the building into condominium units. This will be a three-story condominium building, attached to a three-story barn, also with condominium units. We will concentrate development by reusing existing structures. The current historical building will be renovated, and the only new construction will be to connect the two existing structures, and then upgrades to the inside of the building. There will be eight total units comprised of six one-bedroom units and two two-bedroom units. There will be one, uh, one-bedroom affordable unit and one two-bedroom affordable unit. And the affordable two, two-bedroom unit will be handicapped accessible. There will be two parking spaces for each unit, for a total of 16 parking spaces. And the 40B establishes a con, consolidated local review and approval process. And so, we are here before you're requesting certain list of waivers. The majority, I won't say the majority, but a lot of the waivers that we are requesting are existing non-conforming. For instance, the side setbacks are currently non-conforming. The front setbacks are currently non-conforming. The allowable, the maximum allowable height is currently non-conforming. And those are not going to be changed or altered at all. They would just be, they're existing non-conforming that will continue to be non-conforming. But because we are changing the use of the, the building, we have to apply for waivers from those, from those. One of the major waivers we are requesting is the intensity of use minimum lot requirement for multi-family, multiple family units or apartments, 10,000 square feet per unit for at least two units, and 10,000 square feet per unit thereafter. Now, that precludes a lot, precludes development for multifamily units downtown. Because if you're going to have, you don't have that much space downtown for each of the units. And so, we are requesting a waiver from that, as well as the frontage requirement, which is 125 feet, and that is an existing non-conforming, and will remain the same as it is now and has been. Another waiver we are requesting is any use involving the retention of less than 30% of lot area in its natural state. Another one we are requesting is any use, other than a single-family dwelling, with sewage flow as determined by Title V of the State Environmental Code exceeding 110 gallons per day per 10,000 square feet of lot area, or exceeding 15,000 gallons per day regardless of the lot area. We will discuss, we have a new septic plan that we will present to you, and it has been presented already to the Board of Health. And I believe Rich will talk about that more in, in his presentation. We are also requesting a waiver from site plan review. As you all know, we have already been before the planning board, and they have, they hired a consultant to go through our plans. I incorporated his findings, Larry Graham was hi, was hired. I included his letter in my application, and we addressed one by one each one of his concerns. And so, we feel that we have already gone before the planning view with our site plan and addressed their issues. So we are requesting a waiver from the site plan review. And the last waiver we are requesting is all new septic systems shall be designed to include garbage disposal systems. Therefore, the sewage flow design rate for resident, residential dwellings shall be at least 165 gallons per bedroom per day. And the new septic system will have the sewage flow of 110 gallons per day. And, and again, Richard will go over that when he does his presentation. So those are our list of waivers that we are requesting from the ZBA. And I, I think all of you have a, a clear understanding of the project. Basically, what the building is, I'm sure you've all seen it, you've all driven by it, you know what it's looked like, what it looks like. We're not changing any of the outside appearance. It really is going to look the same from the outside. Everything in the inside, obviously, is going to be renovated. And this is a project that we feel will fit very well in Georgetown, and we have been working on this for years. As you guys know, we were here before you a while ago. And we've tried to address all your concerns, and hopefully we have. But I will let Ray discuss the elevations and the floor plans, so that you can see the new floor plans and what the outside is going to, the building architecturally will look like right now. What it looks like right now and what it will look like, what we propose it will look like after the building.
Shawna, could I interrupt for just a moment?
Surely.
And since you talked about the history of the project?
Yes.
Before we get too much into the details, could you just briefly touch on where you are with DHCD for the, for the board's benefit?
Sure.
In fact, what you've gotten approval from them and so forth? Maybe just sort of for the record?
So we did, the DHCD, we had to submit an application to the DHCD for this project, and they came and reviewed, they came to the site and did a site review of the project, and reviewed our comprehensive application that we had to submit to them. And they have approved this, this site for, for affordable housing. They believe that it, it is, meets the standards and would be a good project. I'm just looking for the letter, I apologize.
It's in the packet.
It's, so they have provided a letter determining the project eligibility under the local initiative program. And that, we had to receive that, get that approval prior to coming to you, to you for the comprehensive permit.
Thank you.
Do you want to discuss other?
I'm just going to go over by the board there.
Sure, absolutely.
Again, my name is Ray Gerton from ITC Architects. And it's Rich. Lock out second means of egress now. Again, I'm Ray Gerton, honored to be part of this restoration and reuse project of this historic property in town. It has a long history, as you know, with great historic significance, and, since 1810. I just want to break down the building as it sits on site right now, just for reference. I'm going to do it from the side elevations here. We have the, the main house, which is really this block right here, the front block that was built, we think, around 1810. And then, this is the L structure, the rear L. The rear L in the, in the connector link, we think was moved here between 1830, 1840, and attached to the backside of the, the main house. And then, the barn was constructed around 1884. As Shawna mentioned, the project consists of, of six one-bedroom units, which are located primarily in the, in the main house, in the, in the L portion of the, of the structure, and the two two-bedroom units, which are located in the, the rear barn of the structure. Painstaking design, if I might add, laying this building out so that we could preserve the, the architectural features of the building, particularly in the front main house, where we changed none of the windows or any of the architectural features at all. So we tried to keep all of the living rooms and rooms that would, would require larger windows up front, so that virtually nothing changes on this front elevation. Going to maintain the front entrance with the leaded side lights, all of the existing windows, and same thing on both sides of the main house. The only changes that we do propose on the side elevations is this right now, this bay window, which we think was actually added as a two-story bay window around the early 1900s. That's deteriorating, so we'd like to rebuild that bay window and then add a, add a double, a double-wide, double-hung window above that, which basically is appropriate for what's there right now. On the other side of the main house, everything remains just as it is. So we try to preserve that structure exactly as it is. The L structure is a, currently a one-story sort of salt box structure right now, which is deteriorating. That has to be structurally reinforced, and what we're proposing is to expand and enlarge that to house the, the, really, the kitchen and dining areas of the, of the apartments in the, the one-bedroom units. It also serves as access and egress for those units. The, the connecting link here, which is just a, basically, storage sheds right now are severely deteriorating, and we propose to demolish that in kind, in total, and construct a new link that would serve as vehicular access through the site and parking areas, as well as provide a second means of egress for the, for all of the front units through the link into the barn and out the front entrance of the barn. So every single unit in the building has two means of egress, one out the front entrance, and one through the link, and out through the barn. The two, two-bedroom units in the barn also have two means of egress, again, through the, through the front entrance of the barn, as well as a new entrance that we propose on the rear of the building. So again, we, we try to take every, every precaution necessary to try to maintain as much of the architectural features of the building as it stands.
Do you want to show the floor plans?
Oh, yeah.
Does anyone have any questions on the, Matthew?
So again, on the, this is the first floor here. On the front of the building, we have two back-to-back units on each floor. So a total of six one-bedroom units in the front main house and the L. So again, this box here was the main, the main building, the main house, and then this is the L structure right here, connecting link coming to the, to the barn area, where we have two, two-bedroom units. The first floor units is a two-bedroom unit, and then the second floor unit is a two-story, two-story, two-bedroom unit with a little loft up. two-story two-bedroom unit with a little loft, playroom if you will, up on the upper floor.
Great.
Evening.
Good evening.
Again, I'm Rich Williams with Williamson Projects and I'm, I'm also excited about this project. I'm also a Georgetown resident. I've been here for, what, 14 years now and it's, it's a property that I've been driving by and saying, wow, something should be done, so I am excited about it. So, as Shawna said, we've got some zoning things that we, we need to, or we're challenged with on this, on this project, one being parking requirements. And in order to provide two, two spaces per unit, we've, we've designed a parking area that's, that's got the main parking area in the back of the building and several spots in the front along the access. This proposed access will be one-way in and then two-way in and out of this parking field. But again, one-way out through the connector piece or underneath the connector piece out and around the building. And we don't think we've, there's really only one way to do that and that, and that's the way that we've shown it. We have designed a septic system and we can see the septic system here. It's designed for 10 bedrooms.
Rich, let me just stop you for a second.
Sorry, we're just trying to follow you.
They're trying to follow along.
The layout plan.
The layout plan. Does it say it in the bottom, right?
Yes, it says at the bottom. And has arrows. Layout plan?
Okay.
I think it's the second page.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I call it the drainage and drainage just so we could have.
Is it the end you're going on?
I have most of the information in one sheet.
Go ahead, don't stop for me.
Let me just go back a little bit. We did receive some comments from the planning board about aisle widths, parking space sizes and the general layout of the parking area. Those comments have been incorporated into this plan. We widened the aisle width and shrunk the spaces down a little bit so that we could fit those parking spaces in there while having the, the aisle width. Onto the septic. This septic is a, is a system designed for 10 bedrooms under the state law. And Georgetown's health regulations, with the exception that Georgetown's septic regulations, as was mentioned earlier, require 165 gallons per day per bedroom. And that is because the, the system needs to be designed for a garbage grinder. Now, they don't only have a garbage grinder, but you have to design for that, that flow and that's why it's 165 gallons per day. This, this system is designed for 110 according to the state rules. We have had discussions with the Board of Health and it is a waiver that they, they grant. I won't say all the time, but pretty regularly. And they were of the mind that, that, that permit would be issued. So, we are in the process of getting their approval on the system as part of this, part of this application. The, the design is a, it's a, it's called a Presby. It's an innovative alternative design. It, it collects sewage from the main building and the back building combines them into several tanks which discharge into the ground. In order to, in order to meet the, the requirements, the state requirements and Georgetown's requirements for separation from groundwater for that system, because groundwater is are, are fairly high in the site, this area needs to be picked up. It's raised about three feet from existing grade, so this will require, require some fill back here.
Where, where will the fill be?
The fill will be along, well, it'll be.
Abutting the condominium.
Correct. And I was just gonna say, this, we also, in order to accomplish that, have designed a retaining wall along this side and the back. So, that's, that's all picked up. It's about, it's about, the average is about three feet. And that would, will be a decorative segment of the wall. As far as our drainage design, we have several components. One on the left side of the building, one on the right and one on the rear which are, all three are infiltration type, type units. This one, there's a catch basin out front which discharges into this system. This, this system here is collected with a catch basin here, infiltrated on that side of the building. And then, the, the flow from here back is collected and infiltrated in this system. There is an emergency overflow in the back here. And the, the design provides for, meets the state stormwater regulations and in those regulations, it requires that you provide a certain amount of treatment before infiltration and provide no increase in runoff off the site. We can't, we can't, as, as a result of this project, flood adjacent properties and that's, this design provides that. And we've done a detailed drainage report to go along with it. One of the, one of the issues that has come up or one of the issues that was raised by the planning board when we were in there before was that we're adding a curb cut on the left side of the building and in order to do that, two spaces need to be removed from what would be eliminated. It's parking on East Main Street and there's a, an existing maple tree in the location of that drive. We have provided a landscape plan and proposed a replacement, replacement trees adjacent to that driveway to, to mitigate for that, for that tree loss.
What's the name of the septic system?
Presby.
It's a Presby.
How do you spell it?
B R E S.
B Y?
B Y.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, I believe a, a copy of that design has been provided to the board. Is that correct?
Yeah, we've got a lot of details in here, yeah.
And, no, I did. You have it.
Just, if you can explain that system a little bit, it's a special pipe that has, it has one wall inside and a wall outside and, and between the two walls.
Do I not do it?
It has fins in it that cause the, yes. It gets additional treatment in addition to what would ordinarily be straight up.
Can I ask a question? Does that have any benefits for nitrogen loading for the Presby system? I asked this before. It's a 110 gallons per, down the square feet. I believe that nitrogen loading is highly flammable. Does Presby provide any advantage for that? Do they have any documentation on that at all? Or do they claim any nitrogen?
I think there's some, but it's not substantial. None of, not, really none of them provide substantial nitrogen removal unless you do a, like a sand filter or, or system like that.
I like to talk to the health department about that. They were saying on, you know, that mitigates 110 gallons to 10 gallons to, just that the zoning compliance.
Right. I don't want to get too ahead of ourselves on the septic, but you had us, this is not the septic plan that was approved because last time you were before, so you had an approved septic plan that was in the packet.
We did and that had a Waterloo and some other issues and instead, we decided to change it to a Presby system instead. And so, we redesigned the entire septic and, like we said, we have already submitted this to the Board of Health and they are aware of it.
Okay, and the flow rate capacity, Rich, or Shawna, for the, the system that had previously been approved was, was what?
Um, it.
Is it approved for 165 gallons?
I believe it was. The, the Waterloo system is extremely expensive.
Yeah, the Waterloo is the only reason that it was, because that was an innovative alternative to get the additional treatment.
To get the additional gallons or whatever, but it, it is extremely costly.
Okay, so it was primarily a cost issue to change, change designs?
It was like $100,000.
Yeah, it's a cost issue, but it's also, they require a lot of maintenance and.
Do we know what kind? Are we talking like more frequent pumping or changing the tanks or filters?
There's, there's media in a tank that needs to be, like, it has to be regularly maintained and there's blowers and. I'll just say that, that I've seen where, where you don't have the right organization taking care of it or they don't, the field fails, okay? So, this system, we found that it requires very little maintenance, the, the Presby We've designed and installed probably 100 of them or therewith and we've not had an issue, so.
We're not septic experts, but we'll get to that issue later in more detail, I'm sure, because this is part of the waivers we need to deal with has to do with, part of the zoning issue of, of the flow rate in the septic. We need to get our minds around all of that as well. But I just wanted to delineate that you were here before with an approved system and this is not, this is something different, so.
Correct. And like I said before, we are in the process of already submitting it and getting approval from the Board of Health.
Okay.
Did you want to hold all other questions about septic or?
No, go ahead. I mean, I, I want to make, I just want to make sure we're gonna get to the audience and everything.
I just have a quick, I, I may have missed this, is there a leaching field or the Presby? Where is that?
That's where I was pointing. Those pipes are in the leaching field. The water runs through the pipes and there's.
And you park on top of it?
Yes.
So, it's way, it's a system that can hold, obviously.
Correct.
Okay, I'll have to do my own private reading on what a Presby is.
It's okay.
Most septic systems you can drive on, it's.
Really? Okay.
If you, if you, if you provide the right, in, in the Presby system, you have to have at least 18 inches of cover over the top of the pipe which we've provided and.
Which won't be higher than three feet than the current elevation? Is that true?
Do you go to Georgetown, ever?
Yeah, but I, I'm trying to understand, so I know you said that between the, the.
I'm talking about, that three feet was the top of the pavement.
Yeah.
Not, and then underneath the pavement is the system.
Got it, okay. Not three feet, feet above. Yep, okay. Good.
We also provided a photometric design. And we really tried to minimize the amount of, of lighting that we're, we're providing here. We've got three lantern-style lights. This is the lantern-style light, we have one, two, three, and those are colonial LED-style fixtures that we've designed so we don't have light spillage onto many, of the abutting properties. We also have two building-mounted LED lights that are also shown in the plan. And again, the lighting level, we're showing that we're not, we're not spreading light onto the abutters, which is a, it's a, it's a challenge having parking and pavement and, and people close to property lines and providing enough light for safety, so we feel like we provided a good balance of, of safety and also being consistent of the abutters and the septic has an effect. And I think with that, Don?
One issue on the parking, and I, I may have missed it, you are eliminating two parking spaces on Main Street.
Correct.
And I know the solution to the tree was you're replanning a tree, was the solution to the, to the additional two parking spaces? What was the, what was the?
Well, you have the other lot that's downtown.
We have the, the parking ride across the street.
Right, no, I know, I just, for the.
That's, that's.
So, you.
Our position is that there's, there's.
Ample parking across the street.
Okay.
We can't create more spaces, so.
Yeah, you're not trying to create parking.
The only thing we can do is use the, the spaces that are across the street which are there.
Still providing the two per unit.
Correct, yes.
Which is probably more than.
Within the lot.
More than is needed for, for 10 bedrooms.
So, parking ride versus on-street, kind of a wash.
Right.
Okay, good. Do you guys have anything else you want to add in general at this point?
We do not.
Okay, I'm sure there'll be plenty of questions to, to follow. Anything else? We have a lot of new correspondence. 30. I guess we'll go through that. How long is it gonna take?
Will I be getting a copy of the new?
Yes.
Personal?
Yes. Do we have an extra copy for her, someone?
She can have mine, I have all of it. I have all of it except for this letter.
Is it better I can email it tomorrow? Yeah, that last one from Paul Nelson's just, it's cut off on the bar.
Yeah, let's go through this first and then, then we'll get right to the audience because I know some of you are waiting and you probably have.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yep, I have all of them. So, I'm just keeping this one, Patty. I'm just keeping this one. And Amy, I can give it back to you tonight and she can email it to me tomorrow. This one isn't even complete, so.
Paul, we have that letter that got cut off at the time. If I forget that.
I don't need it back. I have, I don't need it back Shawna, I have email copies. Thank you.
I'll give you the signal.
Patty, can you still email it to me tomorrow? Thank you. So, Josh, this is Paul's, just give this back to me when we're done. That's Paul's completed.
Oh, we got the last sentence, great.
The last sentence.
Sorry, I don't know what was going on with that, but.
I don't know, it wouldn't.
Thank you, Paul. I don't already have this in here, do I?
You do, the last page.
Paul, you want to go ahead with that first one and then we'll.
Yes, this is addressed to Jeff Moore, Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals regarding Dunbar Tavern, 34 East Main Street, Local Initiative Program 40B Project. Dear Chairman Moore, please accept this correspondence as the planning board's recommendation to the zoning board of appeals relative to the Dunbar Ta- Tavern Local Initiative Program 40B Project located at 34 East Main Street, Georgetown, Mass. To begin with, this 40B project was last reviewed by the planning board and its technical review agent Lawrence Graham, P.E. in February of this year. It was determined then that the application lacked information and plans sufficient to evaluate the engineering and site improvement details associated with this project. The applicant has since submitted project information and plans more indicative of a complete 40B filing and from which, per ZBA request, Mr. Graham can critique the engineering and site improvement elements of this present application and in turn, submit to the ZBA his peer review findings. Such findings in all likelihood will specify additional information needed to properly analyze this project as well as call for plan revisions. For example, Mr. Graham's critique would include but not be limited to analysis of the stormwater drainage features and his determination of whether or not these features adequately treat and store stormwater on-site as well as discharge stormwater off-site as. and store stormwater onsite as well as discharge stormwater offsite as weather events may require. In addition to Mr. Graham's above cited peer review, the ZBA will want to receive a copy of the Board of Health's septic system approval or its recommendation for this project as well as the Fire Department's recommendation on the proposed fire suppression system, which will have to be installed in each housing unit and common structural areas of the site. It is also important for the ZBA to receive notice from the Fire Department relative the, to the adequacy or lack thereof of the proposed onsite fire lanes and driveways, i.e. for fire apparatus to gain access to and within the site from East Main Street. Another concern of the Planning Board regarding this application involves the extensive list of requested waivers, especially insofar as the applicant requests in the ZBA to waive Planning Board Site Plan Review, i.e. What's the S, what's that again?
Section.
Thank you. Sections 165.83, Site Plan Review of the Town Zoning Ordinance, Zone Ordinance. In regard to this requested waiver, the Planning Board respectfully requests that the ZBA consider denying same, for there are too many engineering and site improvement features involved in this application which call for more, not less, town officials to review and comment on. Thus making certain, thus making certain to the extent possible that this project is properly constructed and completed to the satisfaction of all parties interested, especially for the abutters. In addition to the above, even though Georgetown qualifies to invoke safe harbor protections from the 40B proposals under 70, uh, 670 CMR 5, 56.03 and 56.03, uh, four, and F, the Planning Board recognizes and acknowledges as the same holds true for the Board of Selectment and the Georgetown Affordable Housing Trust, see their respective letters included in this application, that 40B applications such as the present one, when properly reviewed and permitted, should be encouraged and supported by our community. For such projects, for such project, projects help to provide much needed market rate and affordable housing in the downtown area. Further, many times such projects become the catalyst for other downtown property owners to invest in rehabilitation projects, housing, retail and otherwise involving their own particular properties, thus leading to a new era of growth and revitalization of this important sector of our community. In conclusion, if members of the ZBA have any questions, concerns, or would like additional information regarding this recommendation, please feel free to contact me or any member of the Planning Board. Also, please realize that the Planning Board is more than willing and able to assist the ZBA in any manner requested relative to property reviewing and analyzing this project, so please feel free to call upon the Board anytime during the review, review proceedings of this application. Sincerely, John Cashel, Town Planner.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Um, did we get a copy of this for Shauna? Did she get?
Yes, she did. I just got a copy, yes, thank you.
All right. Put this back in my file. Um, and we'll roll through these expeditiously, not quickly rushed.
Didn't hand you, it was an email, I was trying to get comments from the Board of Health and that's what I got back.
Very good. Shauna, do you mind reading the next one from Les?
We have a memo from the Georgetown Building Inspection Department to the Zoning Board of Appeals from Les Godin, our building inspector who's in the audience tonight regarding 40B comprehensive permit application for 34 East Main Street. I have reviewed the application and submitted information regarding the conversion of the former Dunbar Tavern building to an eight unit, 10 total bedroom apartment house located in the residential A or RA zone. I offer the following plan review comments as well as a comparison of the proposal to the Georgetown zoning by law, Chapter 165. Use 1, the building is currently listed by the Assessor's Office as a single family slash commercial warehouse. The commercial portion of the use may have been considered as existing nonconforming, however, per 165-91 abandonment may not be reestablished after two years of continuous non-use. 2, apartments are in allowed use by special permit granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Dimensional and intensity of use. 1, the table of dimensional requirements is provided on the engineering plans, however, the provided lot area, property line setbacks, etc., are not shown. 2, this lot is nonconforming with respect to the frontage as 89.61 feet is shown versus 125 feet required. Front and side setbacks to property lines appear to be nonconforming. 3, lot area required for eight apartment units is 80,000 square feet as per 165A4, Note 1, and 165-168. Area provided is 16,663 square feet per file records. 4, 165A4 requires 2,000 square feet of open space, calculation should be provided. 5, 165-68 requires that an apartment house not cover more than 25% of the lot, calculation should be provided. 6, building height is indicated on the architectural plans as 37 feet versus 35 maximum feet allowed. 7, the maximum number of stories allowed is 2.5. Town zoning does not define what constitutes a story nor half-story. Engineering plans indicate multi-story and architectural plans indicate three floor levels and attic in the existing building. 8, additions to portions of the building include the addition of a second and third floor and elevated breezeway as shown on the architectural plan sheet A4, proposed southeast right elevation. The additions, additional bulk, vertical bulk appear to meet the required side yard setback, however, they are not shown on the engineering site plan. Water Resource District. 1, the site lines within the Water Resource District and therefore special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals must be obtained in accordance with 165-32. 2, compliance with 165-32B should be demonstrated, which provides thresholds for site clearing in impervious area. 3, compliance with 165-32D should be demonstrated, which provides thresholds for onsite sewage disposal for systems which discharge in excess of 110 gallons per day, 10,000 square foot of lot area. 1,100 gallons per day per 16,663 square feet is proposed. Note that current design has not been formally approved by the Board of Health. Waivers to the local Board of Health regulations should be listed, i.e. design flow, no garbage grinders, etc. 4, compliance with 165-34D should be demonstrated in regard to stormwater runoff, drainage, infiltration, and pretreatment. Site review. 1, applicant has requested a waiver of 165-83 Site Plan Review. Should the ZBA be acting as the permit granting authority, I suggest that the site plans be reviewed by an engineering consultant on behalf of the Board in regard to 165-83 as well as in regard to WRD Special Permit Sewage Loading for 165-32D. Supplementary Regulations. 1, a public 15-inch maple tree is proposed to be removed at the northwesterly driveway curb. Zoning 165-691 requires that their replacement at the location be determined by the Planning Board. 2, for the record, it should be recognized that the 40B comprehensive permit would serve in lieu of zoning 165-71 Inclusionary Housing Balance Bylaw. Building Code. 1, the granting of a 40B comprehensive permit providing relief from zoning requirements only. Requirements of the Massachusetts State Building Code, Chapter 780, would still apply, including but not limited to fire protection, fire separation, accessibility, means of egress, energy code, etc. 2, the enclosed volume of the building will exceed 35,000 cubic feet and therefore requirements of the Construction Control 780 CMR 107 would apply.
Okay, thanks, Shauna.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Shauna, did you get a copy?
Yes, I did, thank you.
Okay, good. Next, I have an email from Patty Patari to Deb Rogers, who is the Director and Health Agent of the Town, dated November 21st. Hi Deb, regarding 34 East Main Street, 40B Application emailed on 11/14. This 40B has septic, has septic, is a new design and new engineer, William Sprays?
Rogers.
Rogers, I'm sorry. That the one from the previous hearing signed by you, 11/15/2015, please send comments by 11/30. Uh, she replied November 21st. Is that right? Yeah, November 21st. Thank you, Patty, this is very preliminary, so I do not believe I will have any comments at this time, Deb Rogers. She hasn't commented on that. All right, so we have a letter dated November 14th.
And I will get a copy of that email, correct?
Yes, I just wrote it down.
Yep, thank you.
Uh, November 14th, from Colleen Ranshaw, the Director of Georgetown Council on Aging. Dear Board Members, Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals. Dear Board Members, thank you for the opportunity to comment on the comprehensive permit application proposed for 34 East Main Street by Alan and Maureen Alson. I have shared the application documents with Council on Aging Board Members. Concerns raised by some Board Members include increased traffic as well as concern that adequate local noise, uh, local notices provided to the public for opportunities to apply for the potential affordable housing units. The availability of affordable housing in Georgetown is a concern for the Council, Council on Age, on Aging. The projections for growth in the elder population are significant and will lead to additional demand for affordable housing in town. According to the U.S. Census Population, the number of elderly residents living in Georgetown increased from 849 elders in 1990 to 924 in the year 2000, an 8.8% increase at that time. According to 2010 U.S. Census of Population, the population of elders over the age of 60 has now increased to a current total of 1,428, a 54% increase since 2000. The UMass Don Hugh Institute of Economic and Public Policy Research Institute report that there will be a noticeable increase in older and elder residents living in the Northeast in the next 20 years. 25% of the Northeast Region's residents will be 65 years or older by 2035. According to the Don Hugh Institute, the elder population in Georgetown will increase to 21, 2,158 in 2020 and 20, 2,922 in 2030. In 2050, the U.S. Census reports that 8, 88.5 million Americans will be 65 years or older, uh, or more than double the 40.2 million projected in 2010. As the population of the United States ages, the increased local population will continue to generate greater demand for diversified housing by elders in the community. Best regards, Colleen Ranshaw Villarallo, Director of Georgetown Council of Aging. Did you get a copy of that as well?
I got that one.
All right. November 20th, 2017, uh, this is from Chief Fred A. Mitchell, the Georgetown Fire Department, to the Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals regarding Alan Alson and Maureen Alson, 34 East Main Street. Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals, the proposed building renovation must meet all existing Mass. General Law 527 CMR and NFPA fire codes pertaining to the property's proposed use. Finally, ensure that the Fire Department has adequate access to the property in case of emergency response. Feel free to contact me with any questions. Thank you. Best regards, Chief Fred. This to be read into the record, that's not a correspondence, right? This one.
Those are exhibits that you usually mark.
I'm going to do that later. Uh, and lastly, from, dated November 29th, from Paul Nelson. Subject 34 East Main Street, 40B Project and a Bit of Insight into Georgetown Housing Issues. On Tuesday, December 5th, you'll review the 40B proposal for 34 East Main, uh, East Main. Prior to that meeting, I would like to provide you with some information from the 2017 Housing Production Plan and some thoughts, workups that I did for condos in our town. As you can see by Table 43 below, Georgetown is not an inexpensive town to purchase, in, uh, in which to purchase a house. Note that the criteria and tools from the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, provided the content for the table. Clearly, being part of the Lawrence region will not truly affect the act, the, the actual, the average median income, AMI, for Georgetown, but this is a criteria we're given to work with, and he provides a table here with the affordability, uh, purchase description and the necessary income required to afford a home. Uh, in any case, the net analysis is the same, Georgetown is not an inexpensive community in which to live, in part due to the lack of available housing stock. Clearly, if there were more houses or units on the market, housing costs would likely be less. 34 East Main, which is Dunbar Tavern, project proposes to provide a bit of mitigation by adding 10 condo type units in the downtown area, which is an optimal location. If this project proceeds to completion, this would add eight market rate and two affordable rate units to the Georgetown housing stock. The chart below compares a two-bedroom market rate condo unit proposed at 34 East Main Street and a condo unit for sale in the Lake Shore Drive area. As you can see, pricing based on the square footage in each unit is almost identical. Given that the 34 East Main condo will be a totally refurbished unit with all new appliances, it certainly appears to fit easily into the Georgetown condo pricing model, and the table is attached in the body of the letter. Personally, I feel that this is a project that Georgetown would truly benefit from and sincerely, and sincerely hope that this, and I grabbed the wrong one. I apologize, Paul. Uh, what did I?
Was email that got cut off. The one I need back.
What did I just do with it?
I gave it, it was in the.
I know, yours is cut off. I apologize, Paul. You're here, maybe you can finish the sentence for me.
I need to scan that.
Anyway, that's, that's from Paul Nelson. Let me see if I can, I'll find that, I'll find that other one here in just a second, so. Okay, and then we're going to read some, oh, there it is. All right, let me finish this for the record. Let me restart that final sentence. Personally, I feel that this is a project that Georgetown would truly benefit from and sincerely hope that this 40B project will be approved by the ZBA and brought to completion by the developer. Certainly wanted, didn't want to.
Missed that line.
Didn't want to miss that line. Okay, I, my apologies.
I'm going to scan that, can I have that one back?
I'll give you all of these, actually.
We need to mark new correspondence as exhibits since we've already read them?
No, they're in the record, they're in the. You don't have to mark them.
All right. So at this time, we've got a lot of new correspondence, we're going to be talking about some of those details, obviously, and you guys will have the chance to respond to all of that. But before it gets too late, I would like to move on to allow the audience to participate here in the hearing. I know some of you are out and it's getting late, so if anybody has anybody, anyone has anything you'd like to present at this time, feel free to step up to the podium here, you can introduce yourself for the record. Patty would like your address, and come on up and tell us what's on your mind. Oh, it'll catch you.
My name is Paul Nelson, I'm with the Affordable Housing Trust, but, but tonight, really, I'm representing myself too. I really believe in affordable housing, and when you talked initially about the safe harbor issues, safe harbor is, is a condition when you actually have over 10% of your housing that is actually affordable. And that's really not what we have in Georgetown, we have Longview, which gives us 186 units that all go on the affordable list. And of that, only 38 are really available. So if you look at the need for affordable housing in Georgetown, it truly exists, and, and the fact that we're in a safe harbor is really, it's just a idiosyncrasy of, of the way they do the counting. So, anyway, I, I think, I really believe this project should happen, it's right downtown, from affordable housing perspective, it's perfect. So all we have to do is make sure it gets done.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Step right up.
My name is Rob Hoover, 16 Chestnut Street, also Chair of the Planning Board, and I just want to be clear that I'm here speaking just for myself as one planning board member. Before I go on any further, I want to thank all you folks for the time you guys put into volunteering for this town. It's a thankless job and I appreciate it a lot.
Thank you, Rob.
The, what I wanted to mention was, the original Planning Board review, the conclusion of our technical review agent to that set of documents was basically, there was not enough information to perform the review. What you have now in front of you is what I would consider the first pass that is at that level that affords review from a technical review agent. What I wanted to do was, I took, um, I took literally 45 minutes and went through the drawings, and I just want to highlight three items per drawing of why the technical review is important. If you start with your very first page, Existing Conditions Plan, the notes are all in reference to, this is a, a massumed datum, it's not a survey that's been prepared by a registered surveyor. It falls into the plus or minus category. That's fundamental and really important that you get a survey that's prepared by a registered surveyor so that you know in fact what you're looking at is the real deal. That's one. Two, there are some adjacent buildings in the back of the property that are residential buildings. Those should always be located on a plan, so when you have your discussions, you know where these residential units are. That's just an example of the Existing Conditions Plan, and, and there are others. This is what would happen in the review. Moving to the Layout Plan, typically you want to show your setback lines on your plan so you know what's in violation. And while this is a nonconforming pre-existing lot for many conditions, I believe the retaining wall that's being installed that goes from 18 inches high to as high as four and a half feet high for quite a long length is in violation of that setback as it is, will be considered a structure, if you read the definitions of structure in the ordinance. If you, I couldn't find any. If you, I couldn't find any indication for trash removal or dumpsters. I didn't know how that was going to be handled. And if there is going to be a dumpster, then you need to show how a vehicle is going to get in and get out, and I'm concerned with this one-way system, how you're gonna get a front-end loader in to get a dumpster and make it around the turning radiuses that you have. Typically, what we would want to see was, we would want to see those shown graphically on a plan, the turning templates of those vehicles, to assure you that, in fact, those vehicles can make those turns. And I think last, there's a number of other items, but I think the last one that I would mention on that is the loss of the two public spaces. You've already talked about those. The tree that's out front, the ordinance requires that tree to be replaced with a tree of the same size, wood to wood. That's in the zoning ordinance. That's just an FYI. So moving to the Grading Drainage Utilities Plan, if you, I won't bore you with the details, but if you look at the exit of this project, the exit coming out, you have, I'll summarize it without getting into detail, you have almost a 10 percent change of grade from that 100 proposed contour with the catch basin to the road. That's, in this case, it's a 16-inch drop. That's just not good engineering practice. Now, there are constraints, and I know the consulting engineer has constraints that they're working with, but there are mitigation items that you, tools that you can use with regards to something like that. I'm really concerned, I don't think anyone has talked about it, but when you put that retaining wall in, which is gonna have a footing, all of those trees that are on your property and that are off the property, if you look at the project right now, there's a really beautiful stand of trees between this facility and the existing condominiums that are on the left. You'll cut the roots into those trees in half. You'll remove half of the root system. You have a spruce out there that is probably 24-inch caliber and maybe 50 feet tall, as one example of what is serving as a buffer between these two projects. So this is an issue that when you put this wall in, you're gonna effectively cut off approximately half the root system of all those trees that are right on the property line. The ones that are on your property, you're just gonna lose those trees. So that's something to be aware of and needs to be addressed. And again, I'm just indicating a couple per drawing. There are many more, but I don't want to get into the many more. That's what the technical review agent would do. On the Landscape Plan, this is, I always struggle with landscape plans, and I love Rich, but civil engineers are civil engineers and landscape architects are landscape architects. You have PJM Roadkill on the north side of the building. They're a sun-loving plant. They're not gonna thrive on the north side of a building. You have Stella Dorro de Lily's on the north side of a building. They're not gonna thrive. They're a sun-loving plant. I know those are details, but if you're gonna put together a planting plan, then you want to make sure that it meets certain basic requirements. The idea of proposing two replacement maples along the main road to replace the one big one that they would take down, red maples against a main road with salt, that's a basic no-no. They just, they hate salt, they won't thrive, they won't do well at all. There are other species more appropriate for that condition. And all this is just leading into that this plan should be prepared by a landscape architect who understands these issues. And then the lighting plan, I just basically differ with the presentation of it. The lighting plan, in fact, has light trespass. If you go through the lighting plan, you'll find that there are foot candles shown off the property. Two, if you look at the two wall packs that are on the building, they're facing the bank, and they're casting not only a significant amount of light off the property, but they're, because of their nature, they're wall packs and they're trying to light out. So what you see when you come walking down the sidewalk is you're gonna see this LED fixture, and they're very, very bright. They're actually too bright. So the fixture is not the appropriate fixture for that section. A suggestion might be you light something there with light followers. Followers lights can control the light, they're down low, and they can put it just on the pavement, they're not visual. So that's the wall packs. The lanterns, while I commend the selection of the lanterns, the lanterns are actually facing in such a way that, A, they either need a houseside shield to them so that the abutters do not see the light coming to them, or the poles need to be, for example, if you look at the pole that is in the back of the multi-story frame building, I'm not sure how, it's a smaller, smaller building, there's a pole A, I don't know if you all can see it. There's a pole right here, A. Right now, this pole, the spread of the light type of fixture is pushing the light this way for obvious reasons. Well, you don't want to do that because of the residential neighborhoods. What you want to do is you want to contain the light on site, and so you want the light fixture here, and you want it coming back this way. Then, you have to deal with the issue of how the people here live with that light, but at least you've dealt with and the planning sense response to the abutters. That's just an example of the lighting fixtures, their placement, how they should be treated in the current plan that we're indicating that. And then, I think the last plan is just the detail sheet, and I don't know how else to say it, but on the three details, they're either out of date, or they, or they don't make sense, or the dimensions don't drive, or they get bad practice. And so, as a landscape architect, I would reject these details immediately, and so I think you need new details that go along with the landscape plan. And then, I think you also need a wall detail, not words, but you need to see the detail. You need to know what the material is, you need to know what the color is, you need to know how size of the blocks and pattern, because it's going to be facing the residential neighborhood that surrounds it. That's what they're gonna look at, so it needs to be residential. What you've got to say in a drawing format, you're probably gonna need a guardrail, which I don't see mentioned on the plans. When you have a wall that has a 30-inch drop on the other side, it becomes requirement of code that you have to have a guardrail, progression guardrail. So now, you're gonna be adding onto this four-and-a-half-foot-high wall, you're gonna have to add a guardrail to meet code. That guardrail's gonna have to be not only added, but definitely crafted so that for the abutters, what they're looking at is taken into account. And then, you need the dumpster located and the storage for the dumpster and the gate swings and the latching mechanisms. Those are the kinds of things that the technical review agent would do. That's why I came to stress the importance of that, and that we will do whatever the ZBA would like in terms of helping you out, so thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Rob. Appreciate it.
Geez, after those opinions, I had to terminate you, Rich.
All right. So, is there anybody else from the audience? Yes, please. Welcome.
I'll probably be one of the few direct abutters. I'm Karen Mulark. I live at 41 East Main Street. I'm directly across from the property. While I commend you, Mr. Olson, for wanting to rehab the building, I do have some real concerns about the size of neighborhood units as being a direct abutter. I would like to encourage the Zoning Board of Appeals to definitely go through all the needed requirements. I loved all the information from the planning board member here. One of the other things I didn't hear anybody mention is snow removal.
Snow storage.
Where is snow storage going? You've got a large area there that you've got parking on. Where's the snow going? Where's the runoff of that snow going? You're talking about not impacting the abutters. Well, if the snow is remaining on the property and the snow is melting, it's going somewhere. Where is that going? And these are concerns that need to be done, that's something the planning board will look at. I am concerned with the amount of space that you're talking about. There, you've got two, two-bedroom units, the potential for children. There's no open space for these kids to play in. Those are things that I believe that either the Board of Health will look at or the planning board will look at in the size. I want to ask that the zoning board go through all the steps, cross all the Ts, dot all the Is, so that we're not looking back at that as a downtown neighborhood resident and saying, what in the world did this town do? Consider the impact of these areas. I agree that there does need to be low-income housing, but don't let this be your total approval and just go through. Please go through and take all the steps through all the hearings that are necessary, except all the review processes that are necessary, so that everyone is all protected. That's all I have to say.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience has anything to add at this point?
Can I just add something?
Absolutely.
I don't think this is low-income housing. That's not what we're doing here. It's moderate income. Am I correct?
It's affordable. It's affordable.
Big difference. Kind of a negative tone to that word, but so, just want you to realize that it's not...
There will be two affordable units. The rest are market rate.
That's understood. That's pretty clear.
Yeah. Okay. For anybody that's in the audience, you know, we're not gonna get through this whole thing tonight. We'll be given another opportunity, if you're here, to speak, and for anybody who may be watching who has some thoughts, if you come to the next portion of this hearing, you know, we'll certainly give you every opportunity to be heard. So it's not, it's not too late, but I, I think what we need to get our minds on, you picked up, we got a lot of comments. There's probably a few things you want to respond to, I'm sure. There's a list of waivers and some things, I think, from the board's perspective, information that we may wanna, we may wanna get in addition to what's been provided, and so that you're prepared for a hearing that's probably gonna be continued to next month. I'd like to make sure that if there's anything we can get onto a checklist here, that you come back, come back with that. So, does anybody from the board have any specific questions at this time? If we could, you can either start by responding to anything you just heard a few moments ago. Is there anything, I know Rich does some engineering things, for example, I did write down, snow removal, actually, is one of the things. Have you guys considered that, and how would, how would that typically be handled on the side?
We do have some areas for snow storage. We can, we can store snow along, along the edge of the driveway on both these driveways. We also have a pretty big area back here. We can store snow, and if it becomes a problem, it can be taken off-site.
And take it off-site, can I just remind you about what the planning board member said about the dumpsters, the size of the trucks, and how the traffic load goes there, how those trucks are coming in and out?
So we're not having dumpsters? We're gonna do rollout trash instead of having a dumpster for the neighbors and everything to look at?
Okay, so there's a barrel per unit on, where's that gonna be located?
Where? Can you point?
Okay. You're gonna have a enclosure for that of some kind, or just sitting out for, Mello's gonna come and collect them at that location, is that the idea?
They will be rolled out.
Rolled to the side, to the street.
To the street, just like a resident, just like every homeowner does, they will do the same thing.
So the trash will be left on the sidewalk for Mello to pick up?
It'll be rolled out in their thing. Correct. Yeah. Exactly.
You noted on a response, the initial findings regarding snow removal, that the new site plan design provides for snow storage in the grass area adjacent to the rear parking lot. Where would that be?
Right where he pointed before.
Okay, and that, you also indicated possibly by that road and by that road, and where would the runoff be from the snow removal on the...
Oh, goes into the catch basin, which go into the ground.
Is there a possibility that, like, like the small dumpsters, you know, they just pick them up at the front, drop them, would they be able to have access versus trying to put out anywhere from 10 to 15 barrels a week on the street? Because that could conceivably be a little bit of an issue.
I mean, we could talk to Mello, but they're really...
So I don't know if they got like a seven yater?
They have to back out.
They'd have to pull in and back out.
The truck wouldn't fit through underneath the breezeway.
No.
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 That's right, the only, the only egress through that way is under the breezeway.
Correct.
So, yeah.
What's the height of the...
Yeah, it's about 10 feet, right?
No, just under 9'6", I think.
And what's the width?
12 feet.
12 feet.
Yeah.
To get one vehicle through there.
Correct.
Correct. But it's a one-way. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a challenge with the trash.
It is.
Can see that. And I can see a real challenge, you know, with Mello trying to pick up, you know, 10 cans on East Main Street in the morning, like here.
Yeah, I mean, theoretically speaking, I mean, this, this problem presents itself up and down East Main Street, because when you get up towards that point of town, there's parking on the side, so they would need to either roll them out through the driveway, off the sidewalk, or whatever, but I don't think there's a perfect solution to that. These particular spaces here...
I can't hear a word he's saying.
Can you speak up? Yeah. These particular spaces are going away.
Just those two.
These two.
Yes.
Those are staying. So theoretically, you could have your trash out here, which isn't ideal to have, again, 10 or 15, but if...
Oh, I know, it could fit there.
Yeah. I just, I mean...
Will there be a fire lane there?
One issue that, one issue that was brought up by fire chief is that, you know, it has to comply, so...
He's gotta get access to the fire vehicles. Is that, have you guys reviewed that?
Right, he can, he can pull in, he has to back out.
Yeah.
There's not, there's not a, the ability to turn a ladder truck around, but that happens, again, that happens up and down East Main Street, and it exists in that building now. Will be a better situation when this is completed, because it's gonna have, you know, it's gonna have an updated system. And they can pull in and back out.
On either side, I assume.
On either side. They have access, they'll have access to another side that they don't have now. They'll have access to the front and the two sides, and they can pull in and get to the back.
I think it's fair that, I'm gonna ask the chief just to review the final plans. I don't know if he didn't get them. I mean, it was something that was kind of left hanging in his review, and he's the perfect guy to say, you know, this, we have access to our vehicles, you know, with our vehicles in and out of that, as you just mentioned, or if he's got concerns, he can, he can raise them.
We'd expect that.
Yeah. So we want to see that. Do you have anything else to add on your...
Relative to, was it Bob that was here?
Lauren?
Rob.
Oh, Rob, yes.
Relative to the plants and the lighting, the tree line, interested in your thoughts relative to how you mitigate some of those concerns, obviously, that he brought up and that obviously the abutters have.
So, I'll just say, I don't agree with everything that he says.
Okay.
And that's fine, we may disagree, and if, if there's a third-party review, they'll, they'll be able to look at it. As far as the lighting goes, when he says there's trespass of lighting, this is the, this is the 0.1 foot candle.
See your back.
I'm sorry. This is the 0.1 foot candle, and it's on our property. There's a spot over here where it's off, the standard is that they, usually, it's not more than a half a foot candle, that's considered not light trespass, so, I mean, we could adjust that so that line is on, onto us. That is at the ground surface, it's not above, it's not at your eye level, it's at the ground surface, so... So I'd venture to say at your eye level, there would be zero. You would not see that. But we could, we could adjust that light. These lights, as he said, they're forward throw. And that's the reason that we selected those lights, because they, they don't throw light in the direction of the, of the Butters. That's why we selected them, so they go on to the parking lot. And we placed this light in this location so that it lights the parking lot, but doesn't light the adjacent properties. I mean, you can say that, that, that someone's affected by a light. It's, it's similar to if someone turns a light on in their house and you can see the light in the window. Yeah, you can see the light, but it's not, it's not throwing light on to the property. And in this case, I've, I'm a little bit uncomfortable that we don't have enough light back here. Because we only have 0.1 foot candles going through that last space, which is, it's, it's almost not enough light. So I, I would say I don't agree with him on that. And.
Well, I think one of his thoughts for mitigation would be to put a deflector on some of them. And I think that is such a simple.
The lights are designed to deflect the light towards, towards the direction.
That's a simple solution.
And that's.
Sure.
That is in the plan. It's, and it's in the specs for that light. So I'd be happy to discuss it.
Yeah, I think that's why.
And about the plants, you know, we can, we can talk about revising the landscape planner, getting a landscape architect. Maybe we'll have to talk, talk that over as a, as a team. And those planting details have been, they're old, but they've worked for many years. These, the planting details that, that we spec in and have been successful with. Not to say that we would not be open to if he had a suggestion or something that he wanted to add that we, we wouldn't add.
Okay.
May I interject for a minute?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Paul.
I think what, what I'd like to do as a member of the board is to, to sort out. Instead of sort of poking at one little thing here, one little thing there. I think it's, from my, from my perspective, it's, it's obvious that we'd like the planning board to get involved. Or some other advocate to get involved in going through all the details of the site plan. And you will then address them accordingly. I'm assuming that that would be the best way to do that. There's just too many details. And that's why Rob Hoover brought up these, these few issues, because he's just trying to make a point. There's way more issues than, than really what we're capable of handling as a board. Unless we, again, as Jeff and I were thinking, it, it will take us a long time to go through all these details. So that this project that has a lot of scrutiny, obviously, in downtown Georgetown. There's, there's no way that, that anyone who lives around here, and especially closer to downtown like I do. I don't want to walk by this project three years later and regret all the things that I missed. So I'm sure you guys will try to address and make this project as good as it can possibly be. What I am also interested in, so we know that perhaps the planning board will assist us in that. And maybe the health department, we would hope, will assist us in the septic issues and the drainage and, and all these other detailed things. What I'm wondering, Mr. Chairman, is can we delineate the waivers that we feel that we are responsible for? And, and actually deal with those as a board in some.
Exactly.
Concrete way. So that, and then determine where the other things are going to be addressed. So that, again, we don't sit here for three hours, just what is the curb height on the next to the sidewalk?
And, and to add to that, Paul, you know, there may be, there may be some information here. So we need to, we need to go, it's an excellent point. I'd like to go sort of through these and say, all right, what do we need? What additional information do we need in order to make the decision on some of these things? So that you guys can come back, you know, next month. And hopefully, we have those things that we need. And site plan aside for a second, there's obviously, that's going to be the big elephant in the room as far as how are we going to deal with that? We're either going to hire a consultant who's going to, you know, advise us on all these issues, because we're not experts on them. Or, you know, perhaps we, we consider letting, letting the planning board, you know, just handle it. Which, you know, which we can do. And that would be a denial of that waiver and a condition that they would go to site plan review and they, they do it that way. We don't have to decide that at the moment. But Paul's point is, is very well taken. So I had had a couple of notes. Yes.
The board wouldn't be paying for consultants, the applicant.
The applicant would be.
They don't have to open a special and an account.
Exactly. We'd have to open an account. And then I would have to get funded and we'd have to.
W-9.
Exactly. Exactly.
Is that agreed upon on your end if we needed a consultant?
We already know we're required to.
It's going to be a requirement.
All right. Unless it goes to site plan.
I do, I. I would like a moment to think about whether. It's ultimately your decision, obviously. But whether I would push for you, the board, hiring a consultant to go through it? Or having it go to the site plan review? I would just reserve my right to, to make our recommendation. That's the only one I would like to reserve my right on.
Later tonight.
Yeah. I just want a minute to think of, to process that.
Well, let's go through the obvious stuff. So you have the need for a waiver of the 10,000 square foot per unit housing. That's the biggest reason why you're even here. Otherwise, this would have been done two years ago.
Correct.
And it's the 40B. Other than the, so obviously, the fact that Georgetown would like to have more affordable units. The whole 40B process affords them the right for us to waive that requirement without the use, without a variance. Okay? And so that's, that's on us to make sure that we're comfortable with, with that issue. I don't know, I can't think off the top of my head anything specific that we need and any additional information that we need, other than general project information that we might touch on in order to be able to make that decision. And we may, as we continue to review this stuff, come up with, you know, there may be some mitigating conditions or screening or something that, because you're putting more units in a, in a smaller area, are there things that we want to see added? And that would be general conditions. But at this point, I can't think of anything specific.
Can I? Oh, sorry.
Sure. Go ahead. Sharon, go.
I'll go.
Well, I just ironically, that, the whole reason for that, and I, and I realize that we, we can grant a waiver for that, but there's a density issue here. That already is coming up with trash removal and parking and all that other stuff. So it almost seems like, yes, we're, as a board, we can grant a waiver for that. But it's, it's actually, there's a reason why it's there in the first place. So it's.
Absolutely.
You know, so it's. I'm not, I'm not even sure, again, if we, that is not something that planning or a consultant can help us deal with. Because they're not, if they can't meet, it's too dense. The use is too dense. And that's what is requiring a waiver. It's not really working.
That's the whole point of the, of the project. Going through affordable and being able to waive that.
That was the variance they needed in 2015.
Right. Okay.
That's why we're here. You guys are the ones that can waive, they can, can only waive that.
So you'd be looking at, you know, if, if at the end of the day, if this is just too much on this site and the board is not comfortable with the project overall, it would be an outright denial of the project. And that's how, that's how you get beyond that.
I will say that we have reduced the number of units.
Yeah. I noticed that. Yep. And I'm, I'm just suggesting that there, with, through proper planning, it may work better than what you've got right now with the same amount of units. That's all I'm suggesting. It may be beyond my capability to solve the density issue, but it may not be beyond the planning board working with you to solve the issue of density. So I'm just, just, just saying, I'm not.
The only thing that I think would be helpful, and it might go on down the line, is it would really help me to know the proximity of the other, many of the plans that we see. You can see where the Butters' homes are relative to this property. And that probably speaks to both one as well as many.
He brought up a good point about a survey showing the Butters showing the setbacks.
So I think we were asking.
And we're lacking that.
Yeah. And I think we're part of this process is to also say what we need from them, right?
Well, that might help us say, all right, you know what? Maybe it's us, or maybe it's planning to say, gee, some screening right here.
Yeah. So I'd like to see a map.
Is that enough to just show us an expanded plan, Rich?
Does she know what a map is?
And to add to that, I don't, I didn't see the setbacks listed on, on here. The current setbacks and the proposed setbacks. And in most cases, they'd be the same if the outline isn't. Am I missing something? Are they not, are they not on here?
They may not be on there. I'll, I'll add them.
Yeah, we'd like to, we need to at least, in order to make all of these, these decisions, we need to at least reference a plan that shows, you know, the setbacks. The frontage, if it's not, it may actually be on one. I think I saw it on one of them. Maybe not.
The frontage is non-conforming.
I know. But it needs to be shown. So we'd like, the first thing we want to do is.
We'll do a zoning table.
What's that?
We'll do a zoning table and have it.
You can and have it. And, but show that, we want to be able to identify all the existing non-conformities on, on a, on a. We can do that.
We'll do it on the table.
That would be fine. And you can show them on the plan. I mean, I want to see the, you know, the setback line.
I got it.
You got it? And then you can do that all in one with, and if you want to expand that to show any Butting properties.
They are also listed in the application, just so you know.
They are. I did see a minute.
It has to be in the application.
This is really helpful for me.
We almost always see a plan.
I think the board is looking for a line from, from the, from the building to the lot line.
I got it.
Including, including, but also including the zoning table.
I got it.
Okay. Both things.
Both things.
Got it?
It's on the second page of the application check.
And so the other, the other one is the height, the building height. I think there was a plan in here, one of your sections, to show the building height.
Yes. The height is on there. Sorry? It is. Architectural plans, it's on.
On A2.
Thank you.
Is that, okay, so that's the building height from grade?
Grade to U peak.
That's the undisturbed grade? Is that?
Correct.
I mean, I guess that, that portion isn't.
It's not changing.
I guess. Okay.
That's pre-existing.
Correct. It's pre-existing.
Yeah. Okay. All right. And that would, that covers a number of the issues that we know we're going to be dealing with for sure.
Yeah. Open space.
Yeah, there is the open space issue. Talking about number two, right?
Yeah. We need to know the percentage of open space.
Yeah. Was that provided already? Do you know? Fourth section?
We'll include in the zoning table.
Okay. I see it. Yeah. Thank you.
I can't wait to see this.
Okay, there was some calculations. So there's some calculations you need to do.
Well, what also, what he brought up, what Rob brought up, is also the removal of any existing trees. And, you know, how that wall might affect the existing trees that are currently on the property, too.
They're already, a majority of them are already dead.
We don't know that.
So, no, I understand that. But that's, we'll address that with them at the site plan. I mean, they're dead, we can take them down now. I mean.
Well, we, we do, you know, we do cover a lot of, you know, buffer-type issues in general. And the details to be, which could be, you know, if someone's going to the site plan, we see the details worked out. But we got to do something to maintain this buffer or whatever. I mean, we do some general, because we need to mitigate the concerns of some of Butters. So I guess, yeah, if you can provide any information about what that plan is. So you show the trees on here? These are existing?
Correct. These.
Saying that they're no longer alive. So they're going to be replaced?
Some of these are on our property and they're dead.
So. Yeah. So is the plan to replace them with?
They're dead.
They're on our.
They're dead from this project. They're dead.
They're dead.
But they're shown on here. So to us, that's a buffer. Well, if they're dead, that shouldn't, either not, don't show them, or you're going to agree to replant something? I don't know. I'm just saying, what, what's the plan?
We're only required to replant.
We'll talk about it.
Yeah.
We'll respond to that, that issue. I assume the issue is that you want to provide a buffer between, between the, the adjacent condominium and this, and this.
Yeah. I mean, we want to see something. If it's shown on here, you're showing, you know, some, some mature trees on here, obviously.
We've done it in the past where I've been here and someone may have a fence or some structure shed or whatever. And they, the Butters would like some coverage from whatever that view will be of prospect.
Right. So in, in this case, we did make an effort. We, when we originally did the project, the wall was on the property line. We pulled the wall back from the property line. So that we could place it. And we're, we're not intending to do a deep excavation. It's intended to be a block wall. Those don't need a deep excavation, so we wouldn't be cutting the roots. And we tried to keep off so that we weren't covering more than half of the tree in hopes that whatever is there would survive. And that's, that's why we pulled the wall back. And we would, we'll, we'll provide a detail, like we suggested, a detail of the wall, what the product is. And we'll talk and, and reply to the, the question about buffering between, between this and.
That'd be great. I mean, a general, a general plan of how you, what's the, what's the game plan? And that's a big, that is a big deal. That's a good improvement. To know that you're not going to have to dig deep and put a footing in, you know, it solves, potentially solves a lot of these issues.
However, it should be included that whatever requirements there are for walls that are 48 inches. You might, I suggest you include any information relative to what Rob's comment was, which that, that size wall does need to be, you know, footed and so on and so forth.
Hey, Les?
No, I was.
Uh, he stated 30 inches would need a rail on, on the wall?
If it's a walkway, if it's an elevated walkway, yeah, it has to have a rail.
Walkway.
So there has to be a walkway on the high side of the, of the.
That, you know, the retaining wall.
If there's not, then railing is not required.
I think within five feet of a walkway, I think.
I think it's within two feet.
Within two feet of a walkway.
But I also think it's 48 inches, not 30 inches.
All right. So let's get that number.
Yeah. There is no walkway.
But there is no walkway.
There's no walkway. So really, a railing is.
So you don't need a railing.
Don't need a railing. But we would provide either a curb or, or some, some guard at the top of the, at the top of the wall.
They're talking about the retaining wall? Between the two condos?
Although there was a comment made that it, it has to require, it has to conform to the setbacks, which I've.
Yeah. I've never heard that.
It's actually a structure. It includes everything. And Rob has brought that up before, that retaining walls actually have to meet the setbacks. And I can't find anything that disputes that. But if it's before the board, that should be brought up and the board can leave that. It's just a three-foot retaining wall.
Between that and a fence.
Is it three or is it four? It doesn't make a difference to me, there's three footers.
He's saying it has to be the setback, the retaining wall is a structure, which has to be a building setback.
Or is it considered landscape?
What's the difference between that and a fence?
Well, it accepts that, and under structure, it says except boundary fences, those don't count. Fences, boundary fences don't count, but the structure, a wall, that's a structure.
And a curb would, a curb would also meet that definition.
Right.
Yeah.
Why don't I suggest that we, we research that with Les, and that's clearly a waiver you're going to have to get, you're going to have a retaining wall. You know, if we're not going to be comfortable granting that waiver, if, if one is even needed, then obviously that causes a major problem. So we're either going to have to, you need a retaining wall to bring the site up to grade.
Correct.
Correct. It needs to be designed in the most appropriate way possible, for all the reasons we've discussed. If it would otherwise require a variance, then we would have to grant a waiver to whatever that requirement is. I, this is, I can't believe in the years, the number of years I've been on this board, this hasn't come up before.
I'm thinking Dunkin' Donuts when we did that, when we did that wall.
I don't.
That we didn't, we didn't have to.
That should be on our.
We had the stamp, but it'd look pretty, with the panels.
I'll, Les and I will get together on that.
Literal, literal interpretation, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's what it says.
Is that fair enough? We'll, we'll deal with that on our end as far as the need for, for setback issue on it, because you're not.
And we're aware that anything over four feet needs a, a building permit, so it would be, we would have to file the details for a building permit. If it's over four feet high.
Okay. For Water Resource District, I'm skipping over, well, I am and I'm not.
Skip a subject?
No, not, not necessarily. It's part of, it, it ties into Water Resource District a little bit. But part, part of the Water Resource District, is this entire lot inside the Water Resource, okay. One of the things we would typically need is an, is an analysis certifying compliance with one sixty-five thirty-four, to be done by a technically qualified expert. I didn't see anything in your application that, that addressed that specifically. So one sixty-five thirty-four is a design and operation guidelines to meet the Water Resource District. And you guys have, generally, we, you know, we can receive something from an expert on your side for this? Yeah, somebody that's stamped and qualified?
Yeah.
I, I don't think on this we, we have to go out, necessarily we would have to, you know, hire an outside person to do this, but you guys could do it.
Yep, we respond to things typically without that.
All right. A, a brief summary of the expertise of the person reviewing it, and you reviewed this, and you met all the requirements. Then we can review that further. I am skipping over the balance of three for a moment. Site plan review, we can talk about that in a minute. Setback. Setback height. Back to the septic issue again. All right.
Jeff, it appears five, six, and seven are probably the.
Existing non-conforming.
Yeah, those are all really, yeah.
Really straightforward.
Yep. One. Two, you guys are, oh, for number, for number two, you, you're going to do a calculation for the, okay. All right, so five, six, and seven are clearly setback issues. This board can handle all of that. I don't think, I can't think off the top of my head any more information we need on that. Unless you guys do, we can. I'm going to hit on Les here for a second, on the septic. I'm, I'm trying to understand, my, my gut says that it should be easy enough for, or straightforward enough for the project to move forward to get an approved septic plan, or have the Board of Health approve the septic plan. We can, we can certainly just say that this project requires an approved septic plan, but I think, unless we can maybe help me out here. What waivers specifically do they need from us in order for the, for them to do that?
W R D, that one sixty-five. One sixty-five thirty-two.
Thirty-two D.
D.
Which is the one I listed, number three?
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's up to this board, not the Board of Health.
Yeah.
Someone else has to force that, it's up to this board. If the hundred and ten gallons per ten thousand square feet, this proposal really, really exceeds that. And our bylaw doesn't say why. You know, that's, but normally like under Title V, they talk about nitrogen loading, the four forty gallons per acre or a hundred and ten gallons per ten thousand square feet, that, that parallels that. I think they're talking about nitrogen loading. That's why I was asking about that. Maybe the engineer could provide some kind of statistics. Like what a Presby gave, he always claims credits for everything, like.
Well, there's some, there's some decrease, but honestly, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's not, it doesn't.
It's not, yeah.
Eliminate that, the nitrogen, and, and the nitrogen removal is, if you are in a Zone Two.
Right.
To a water supply, they consider that nitrogen sensitive, and in order to, in order to design a system, you have to provide additional nitrogen removal. We're not in the Zone Two. But we are in the local Water Resource District.
Right, it's important for the board to know that.
This is.
Code.
Yeah.
That gives numbers like Title V, but it doesn't say it's the nitrogen.
Is it adequate? Well, this, this waiver is really part of the, what would typically be a Water Resource District special permit that would be issued by this board, in order for us to issue that, right? It falls under the same category, which is, it's all under the same thing. So in lieu of a special permit for construction in a Water Resource District, we would review this as though we were applying for one, and it would be included in the comprehensive permit, and we would waive your need for a special permit for, for that. So what's triggering, you know, this, the one sixty-five thirty-two D, is sort, would, would typically trigger, right, the need for a special permit in Water Resource District, correct? So all we really are needing to do is get comfortable that, that you're meeting the Water Resource District requirements in the bylaw.
Right, so we'll, we'll respond to that.
If you, my question, I guess, then, is if, if you have a, a system at a hundred and ten gallons a day, you cannot have a garbage disposal, correct? Is that, is that right? I mean.
You can't, you cannot, you can't have a garbage disposal in Georgetown anyways.
Okay, so what's the one hundred sixty-five?
Even the green ones?
You cannot have one.
Okay, so the local ordinance does.
Local Board of Health does not allow, does not allow garbage disposals.
Okay, so what's the one sixty-five requirement that's, that's a town requirement?
Yeah, the town requires you to design for garbage disposal.
But you're not allowed to have it.
But you're not allowed to have them.
Okay, and the Board of Health can grant you that waiver?
Yes.
Okay, so you don't need that specific waiver from us? You can go to them if we, we so, so choose. I'm not going to sit here and talk about septic all day unless we bring somebody in who's going to educate us all on it.
We're planning, we're planning on getting a permit from them with that waiver.
Okay.
That's, that was our plan with that waiver from us.
No, they can give it.
That's what I'm saying, is what do you need from us to be able to go to the Board of Health and get an approved plan? Do you need us to specifically waive the requirement from one sixty-five gallons a day down to one ten?
I don't believe so.
I would rather say, let them tell you that that's adequate. You see what I'm saying?
My understanding is that they're going to grant the waiver, or, or that, that we're going to ask, and we, we hope that they will, and that was the process that we were, we were going through and are going through.
But Mr. Chairman, you also have to grant a waiver under the Water, under sixty-five thirty-two D.
For?
For the same thing. It's, it's the exact same thing. For, under the Board of Health, four sixty-two eight B and one sixty-five thirty-two D are the exact same waiver.
Thirty, right, we're talking about thirty-two D, but we're talking about four sixty-two.
Right, no, I understand. I mean, we have to give them a waiver for a Water Resource District special permit.
Which is, which is for, for reducing from one sixty-five to one ten.
Okay.
But the Board of Health will be doing the same thing.
Okay.
Reducing from one sixty-five to one ten.
All right.
And, and.
But we can require as a condition that they require, that they get a permit from, that they get an approved septic plan by the Board of Health.
And if I may, I would suggest that the, that the draft condominium documents show that, that garbage disposals are prohibited because a condominium association can actually go in and inspect units, whereas the town cannot due to Fourth Amendment rights and things like that. So they have a much stronger enforcement than the town would, so I would make sure that that's in the condominium documents.
Okay, you guys, I assume, haven't drafted condominium documents at this point, getting a little ahead of yourself. But we can, we can provide that as a, as a condition of the.
We would need to see draft condominium documents before this is approved, so we would need a copy of those. And things such as trash would also, could also be regulated by the condominium documents. The septic system maintenance would be regulated by the condominium documents. Landscaping, such as fertilizers, what fertilizers this board is comfortable in allowing them to use and not allowing them to use, the snow storage, what kind of, what kind of snow storage, what kind of snow treatment that you would be comfortable in allowing them to use and not allowing them to use, would also be all within the condominium documents. And so those would be regulated by the condominium association. And as far as I recall, a Presby system does not, does not require, it doesn't require much from D E P, correct? It doesn't require a two-year inspection or anything, does it, from D E P, the Presby system?
Not from D E P, but it's an annual report.
Right, but they don't.
That it's been pumped and maintained.
But it's not an I A or anything like that, so.
Well, it is an I A.
Right.
It's an innovative alternative, but it's a one-year reporting. It's very simple.
Okay.
Something that the condominium can definitely handle.
Okay. I'm thinking more along the lines of a nitrogen, of a, of a nitrogen, of a denitification system, so, and it's not one of those.
Correct.
And I don't, I can't really, I can't think of anything else right now for condominium documents, but we can, we can make sure that other things are in those that would make this board comfortable.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense if you guys are willing to.
Yeah, get some boilerplate going on that. Do you want to work on that a little bit, or is that reasonable?
Are we ready, are we ready for condominium documents yet? I agree with you, I don't have any problem with doing that, but I think we're far, far away from that. You can just list the things that you'd like to see them, and then.
Well, it, it actually sounds like a great idea personally.
I agree with the idea, but I'm just saying.
Well, that's why I'm wondering if you get a draft copy worked up, and I, and again, I'm sure a lot of it is fairly straightforward. I, people that own condos probably do this a lot, so I don't, that would be, I think, basically what we're suggesting is if we're going to sign off on this and grant waivers for these things, we want to know how they're, they're going to be maintained and how the condo is going to work within the community as far as, like you said, trash and fertilizer. That's not a, that's a great idea.
I agree. I, I think our biggest hurdle at this point is going to be site plan review. And, you know, there are some things that prohibit, that if not approved by the site plan of the planning board, then it's going to prohibit this project. So I, I think that's our biggest hurdle. So I would almost recommend and advise not to do, expend more money on new things that we haven't already done yet until site plan review, since.
We can make a list of all the things you want in there, and then we'll have them, I mean, as we go through it.
Yeah.
We know what they, I know, okay, there's no wizard, we have that list, and then later we incorporate it. We don't want to be doing a whole complete document that.
Right, I wouldn't.
That keeps changing and changing.
Can, can we make a condition that, at the end of the day, before this thing is final stamped, that we have final review of the condo docs?
That is a condition.
It's a condition.
It is a condition.
So that would provide us the opportunity to make sure the things we just mentioned were in there, and we could thus forego a draft of those, or?
Well.
What do you, what do you, I'm, I'm deferring to you on your, your opinion on this.
We usually have a draft of the condominium documents because of the fact that when, because of the fact that you want to make sure these things are already in them.
Right.
Because these will also be conditions, so there'll, there will be a double layer of protection. So you will have, you know, you will have, for example, that there will be a condition that there will be no garbage grinders, but then it will also be in the condominium documents. And the condominium documents, the draft condominium documents, they, they really are draft. They're, with a forty-B, the applicant is, is really presenting preliminary plans. And, and so everything is really preliminary draft, so, so the condominium documents would be draft. I understand the applicant's concern, and so we could, you know, we could do skeleton, you know, just skeleton documents, just make sure that everything that we wanted is in there, or, you know, an outline of what we wanted.
The second question I had, if I could, Jeff, Mr. Chairman, is that are these conditions within, that we're talking about within these condo docs also going to suffice if they go to planning board review? Will it be dual-fold beneficial for that?
That's, I don't want to speak for Sean, I think that's your concern, is we draft them here, and then they come up with four other things, and you got to go, and then, so.
So, so they would be, the condominium documents would be approved by this board prior to, prior to the first building permit being pulled. And so therefore, site plan would already have been, you know, completed. So, so that wouldn't necessarily be a problem. We would make sure that everything, you know, everything was in there. The problem would be if there was a conflict between what this board was requiring and what the planning board was requiring. I'm not sure we would see an actual conflict. We, we might see a different level of, you know, what this board wanted to require and what they wanted to require, you know, maybe a different level. I don't, I, I don't foresee an actual conflict.
For the, the garbage grinder issue, it's, it's a no-brainer. I don't see the Board of Health asking for condo documents to require it, but we could certainly do it, knowing that that's not going to be an issue, that sort of handles it.
Right.
For all this overlapping site plan review stuff.
Anyways, it's a good idea for the condo to do.
It's a very good idea. It, it's very common, it's, it's very, very common.
You know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree, the skeleton type of thing is what I'm saying.
Only to address our specific waivers.
Right.
Just to address the things that we are, relevant to us making, granting a waiver for this water resource thing. Clearly, it's tied right to the garbage disposal issue.
And, you know.
I have no problem agreeing that those will definitely be in the condo documents. My, I guess my only concern was expending more money on drafting condo documents when what's really going to, at this point, I think what's the biggest hurdle is the planning board with you.
I, yeah, any sort of document that, that points to, this would be part of the condo documents eventually. Point one, due to the water resource issue and the septic system, no, can't have garbage disposals. And maybe there are other things, like you said, water resource issues, fertilization. There are just things that are specific to us. So I, maybe.
So we'll keep it.
We'll keep a running tally of them, we'll keep a running tab.
Things that need to go in there.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, excellent. Maybe we can respond with our less than you guys.
Some of this is going to be helpful with planning.
So procedurally there, what are our options around planning? We either hire an, an, send them back to planning, hire an outside?
I mean, I'll, I'll be honest, I mean, the whole, and we, I discussed this with Sean earlier. I'm not really comfortable doing site plan review here. You guys may be, you may agree with me, you may disagree with me. We're going to have to hire consultants to advise us. Frankly, it's going to be the same consultants the planning boards would hire. You might get a few more questions specifically from, from them, but if Larry Graham, whoever's going to be doing, reviewing this, we're going to ask a lot of questions that may be obvious because we just don't do this. So this type of review requires the zoning board to do, you know, review tasks that we don't usually do. My opinion is, the town has earned its right, I think, at this point, to allow those boards that do the things they do right to go ahead and just do them. And honestly, I don't think it's going to take the applicant that much more time to get through the review because they're going to have to do it with us anyway, and it's going to take, instead of being with us for two meetings or three meetings or whatever it's going to take to get through this, it's going to take six months. So that, I guess the question would be is, you know, if we agree that that's going to be a condition, at this point, we can, you know, we can stop sort of needling on all the issues that Paul's talking about, because we know it's going to be taken care of at a later date, and we can move on with the things that we really need to focus on, and that's maybe in the best interest of everybody's time.
Can I just get clarity, are you, are you asking if we would defer to the planning board? Or we would simply hire the, ask that they hire the, that we hire Graham associates to review it for us?
Either accept their waiver for site plan review, and then we do it, or we deny that waiver and allow the planning board to do their thing.
There's not the third option of us insisting on the technical review on behalf of the planning board. So I guess I'm wondering if there are three options. One is, we, we, we completely defer to planning and have them do it. Or is one option, we as a zoning board hire Graham associates to do the technical review that was done before on our behalf, so it saves them going through whatever that full planning board, it's a compromise of sorts. We're still getting the technical review, which I thought was very helpful.
It's not going to matter, it's going to be pretty much the same amount.
I disagree.
Well, maybe quicker.
To do the technical.
Then it may go through quicker. It depends on what.
Uh, not from what I've seen of planning board, but, but.
I, well, I don't even know, I, I don't know. I'm just saying. And they're, they're just asking.
I would ask you, are you comfortable doing site plan review?
That's my concern. Respectfully, I don't know that we have the requisite skills or background.
More comfortable with planning board doing their job on site plan review.
Okay, I'll defer.
I encourage that. Some, some place along the line, it's like having this independent council going on right now. There should be some limit, the planning board shouldn't be a two-year process. I know I'm being a little facetious, but the planning board isn't the fastest.
That's true. Actually, can we, can we guide them to a reasonable timeframe?
Could, um, well, and I had another question. Sorry, Amy, I'll let you finish, but is, do we have to go through, are you saying we have to go through the formal site plan review submission process? Or are you guys sending it to planning board for site plan review?
Can we do it within this process, or do we have to go outside of this process and file separately?
On that, how that would work, because I'm.
We could, we could.
We have a waiver request on the table that we have to deal with.
We could ask the applicants to go to the planning board and to get a recommendation from the planning board. And essentially, they would be going to the planning board for site plan review, and then they would come back to this board with a recommendation, and the recommendation from, so.
That's fair enough.
The recommendation would be, grant them site plan, don't grant them site plan.
And they would hire consultants as well.
And that way, we are under a time limit.
Yeah, you're under our time limit then.
So I'll say, and I do a lot of work in Middleton, that's how they do it. The zoning board of appeals is the permanent granting authority for site plan approval, but you go to the planning board first, get their recommendation, and then, and then go to the Z B A.
We don't disagree with that. We tried to do that, and I thought we had done it. We actually paid for the bylaws, Larry Graham, and, and we don't, and we're going to go back again, but we.
Well, it's certainly, certainly a lot of this has already been done on their part. It's been the first time they've seen this project, so there's, there's no reason why it should, you know, take, you know, an exorbitant amount of time, and.
I would agree.
In effect, to a certain extent, obviously, you've seen, at least one member has reviewed these plans already. Actually, they've reviewed them twice because we've got, you know, the planner has reviewed them and provided comments as, as Rob. So, you know, they're well on their way to making comments for the next iteration of plans.
Can I just add one more thing to that?
Yeah.
That if, if that's the way it's gonna go, it's gonna go to the planning board and Larry Graham's gonna review it. We'd, we'd like to be able to, within this process, deliver a package to Larry Graham and the planning board of what he's gonna need to review it, uh, so that we don't have to go to
Planning.
Planning and, and then go through that process and have him select, um, Larry Graham. Because it's gonna add another meeting and.
That's what I was wondering. They're gonna probably wanna hire Larry Graham, aren't they?
Well, we can dictate that is what you're getting.
Right, right. He's already reviewed. We'd rather stick with the, the guy who started it.
No, only, only the zoning board of appeals can, can hire a technical consultant under the, under seven sixty. So the zoning board of appeals would hire Larry Graham to work with the planning board.
Yeah.
Yes. So, so the planning board, I, I mean, I, I would suggest possibly maybe that Les speak with John and, and make sure that Larry Graham is who they wanna use. I'm assuming it is since.
Initially.
Right, exactly. I would just, maybe we could just confirm that, but yes, that would be what would happen. So this board would vote to hire a technical consultant, um, to work with the planning board. Um, does this board feel that they need a technical consultant for anything else?
My only concern is the septic issue. And I, as long as we can allow the board of health to do their typical review without us feeling like we're compromising anything in the way of safety or by granting a waiver that we're not familiar with. Um, and it doesn't sound like we necessarily will. I don't, I don't.
That's gonna be an issue.
And you do have time. You don't have to decide tonight. You do have some time on that.
I don't think it's a huge issue. It's just something that, um, you're not familiar with. And you guys are gonna provide a letter from a, from a qualified expert on the.
On that section.
One sixty-five thirty-two D.
All right, so if, if any of that needs to be or can be addressed, that would be helpful, I think.
Okay.
All right.
Um, so, so, oh, I'm sorry. So, um, so if that is the case, however, I, I, it is, it would be an issue where I think that, um, that the consultant will review these plans for the planning board. However, I do think that you will need to have a meeting with the planning board that will have to be an open meeting. It will have to be with the entire board, so it will have to be a noticed meeting. You will have to go to a meet, you know, under the open meeting law, you will have to go to a public meeting with the planning board. I don't think this is gonna be just you and the planner.
Of course, of course.
Good, okay.
Of course. What I was, what I was just saying is that, as long as, I, I'm just trying to cut a meeting out of it.
Okay.
If we can agree that as long as it's okay with, with the planner and whoever in town needs to be okay with it, that we can send a package to the planning board's typical consultant. Larry Graham has already worked on it, um, so that he can get going. And then we can have that review for our first meeting with the planning board. Uh, I think it will, it will save some time.
Yep, and then you're on our timeline, which doesn't change from tonight as far as, as making a decision and getting everything done. That puts them on our timeline as well.
Exactly.
May I ask a quick question?
Fair enough.
Still a hundred and eighty days.
Yes, still a hundred and eighty days.
How did you, you've already seen Larry Graham once and the planning board once.
Public meetings.
So how did you get to this plan where members of the planning board are still saying there's significant, not significant, but there's changes that need to be made to the plan?
Because we.
Cause the details weren't on the plan before.
All right, so we're, it's just.
It's refining their, their questions.
All right.
So we addressed all their previous.
For instance, there was no lighting for them to comment on.
No, that's good. I just, so it, it, in other words, you didn't, right, it's just another layer of detail that's being added to this.
Yes.
As well as an occasional difference of opinion.
It happens.
Well, that's my issue. That, that's kind of one of my concerns, actually, is let's say we have that where we have a difference of opinion on the lighting, right? And we're before the planning board and the planning board believes that the lighting is wrong and we believe the lighting is right. And now we're at an impasse.
I'll say, we don't care about the lighting. If you want light bulbs in the dust or if you want Christmas lights, you know, it's a different. I'm not being, I, I, that's just the way I am, but saying, but I mean, the point is, if you have a light, you know, it's a little different. It's a, it's ten dollars here, ten dollars there.
It's minor.
Yeah, I mean, so we're, we're do whatever we want. It's just a matter of coming up with the right thing that works, you know, that doesn't affect anybody.
That's why it's, it's interesting in the big picture is when you look at the, the, the use of the site. Is the planning board or is Graham associates or whoever they are, are they going to determine that it's just too much use on that site and you need to go to six units? Could that happen? Is that possible?
Right.
I don't, I don't think the planning board, I don't think the planning board can do that though.
It's, it's possible for you to make that decision, but it's not possible for the project.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm wondering is, is if they, what you're talking about in pass on, on lighting, that's clearly not gonna be an issue. Trash storage might be, uh, uh.
But whether you have six units or whether you have eight units, you're gonna have the trash.
You have less parking. You have less parking, so you have more room to do onsite type activity.
We can't go in and out is the problem.
Well, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, no, 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 I know, I know, I know.
You're saying, uh, is, is.
We struggled with the garbage thing, to be completely honest.
How locked in, how locked in is that height, that eleven-six height?
So.
Fairly locked in because, as I mentioned, that connector link provides a second means of egress. So aligning up the floors, they don't line up now, but we provide stairways to make them work. So I was sort of balancing.
An extra step, an extra step would give you ten feet.
Ceiling height in that existing structure is an issue, so stepping up, uh, is a problem.
Well, you're building the connector, right? The second level of it.
But if you're stepping up from that building into the other one.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I haven't really seen any plans on it, but I'm just throwing it out there.
No, no, it's a good point. It's a good point.
Cause it is tough, not being able to get a tentile truck in.
But I'm just answering your question that, that, that height limit is a function of existing floor levels that we have to accommodate.
No, I get that part of it.
Well.
Generally, I think, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanna table any further details on this until, until later, cause it's getting late and we have some, a few things we wanna accomplish here from housekeeping, so to speak. So is everybody, uh, in agreement that we would wanna hire Larry Graham to work with, to do a?
I agree.
Review the project and work with the planning board for site plan?
Yeah.
Uh, review.
Need a motion?
Do we need a motion?
Just in case, if, if Larry Graham can't do the review, Patty mentioned that, uh, you heard that he's quite busy these days. Like in the worst case, if he can't do the review, should we have like a backup engineer or something? You know, do we have to just have one engineer?
Yet, uh.
He says I just can't do it, you know what I mean? He's quite busy and I, I heard he might be.
Yeah.
Couldn't get him from L.A.
Yeah.
Qualified expert?
Sure. Hire, to hire, hire a consultant to work.
Similar qualified, expert.
You wanna make a motion, Dave, do you mind?
Do we have to include in the motion who pays for it?
We pay for it. Or is that understood?
It's gonna be, that the ZBA will hire, that the ZBA hire Larry Graham or other qualified experts to review the project.
I'd like to make a motion that the ZBA recommends that we hire Larry Graham or a similarly qualified engineering firm to work with planning.
For?
Four thirty-four East Main Street.
For site plan reviews.
To be paid for by the applicant.
For site plan review.
For site plan review.
To be paid for by the applicant.
To be paid for by the applicant.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any further discussion on this? Do we need any more details on that? If Larry is not available, we could work offline.
The other, the other, the other firm that the planning board uses is BSE.
Okay.
Um, and we'd be happy to, to use them.
All right, and we'll get, I'll get with, with Rob on that. If, if Larry's not available, I'm sure he'll, we'll be talking anyway as far as what the game plan is here.
So then will you guys let me know that once we can send the package directly to him and get it started?
Absolutely. We need to open an M account.
We need a check first.
We need a check.
We need a motion to open a special.
See amount, is there?
I would start with five thousand.
Yeah, okay. Does that work for you guys?
Did we pass the motion yet?
No, we're in discussion. We're in discussion on the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're in discussion. Okay, sorry. I'm sure we didn't forget to do it.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, okay. So that's the route we're gonna go. Larry Graham or somebody else that's available, BSE perhaps, will work directly with you and the planning board. Site plan approval. Um, you know, we will continue on, you know, our timeframe since we opened the hearing tonight. Do we need to give the planning board guidance or notice as far as their timeframe to get this done?
We, we should, um, we should. So we have until, um, we have until June third of two thousand eighteen unless, um, this, this timeline can be extended by the applicant in writing. You know, i- if necessary. But, um, what I would suggest is that, um, unless this board feels necessary, perhaps not meet on this until February. So that gives, that gives the applicant two months to work with the planning board to at least have a start. Um, I don't think that you would be finished with them. I'm, by, by the time you get everything, get the consultant and have him, I would hope that you would be able to get the consultant all of the information and have a meeting with the entire plant, with the actual planning board by the time February comes around. Do you think that that's plausible?
Yeah, when, when is the meeting in February?
You know, I don't know. Do you know?
February sixth with us?
No, planning.
No, your meeting.
Oh, it would be, um.
This is February sixth.
Yeah, it'd be the sixth, yeah.
I think so. I think it would give us.
I mean, we need to pick up on some other issues anyway, so whether.
So I have to provide, I, I mean, I'd like to meet with you guys February regardless because hopefully we'll at least have a lot by then. And then we can also provide you all the other required, all the other information you wanted to meet on those.
Yes.
Yeah, I move to continue the hearing beyond ten P.M., uh, for thirty-four East Main Street.
Till ten thirty?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
So, um, I'm just, I, I just wanna make sure we're all clear on how it works, Amy. So you got, someone will contact the planning board and you guys will let them know that they have to do a site plan review with us. And someone will notify us with, after we give you the check, who we need to supply all the plans to.
Correct.
And then, I don't know when their meeting is. I guess the next time they meet after we give the consultant the plans, hopefully we can meet with them. Is that what you're thinking? Okay.
Now, we are, we are hiring this.
Cashell independently and see if, tell them what our timetable is and see if we can.
Well, I'm wondering if we can, if we can, uh, we, we need enough time to be able to wrap this thing up and make a decision. I mean, can we tell them that a decision should be provided to the zoning board no later than our meeting on, you know, April or, you know, whatever.
That would be.
You know, we have our next, our meeting would be, you know, give them a couple of months, but.
Right, yes.
April third, I think, would be.
Sure.
Is that our hearing, right? Um, I forget what our meeting date is. It's either the third or the tenth. I think it's April third.
I think it's the third.
So whatever our meeting date is, we, we want them to provide, you know, a recommendation for site plan approval, you know, no later than that date. In time for our meeting on that date.
I would like that, yeah.
Can I ask a question, Tom Council? Uh, are we bound by the, um, public meeting, like, like, do they have to have a quorum all the way through? Because that has been an issue with the planning board. Okay.
Well, they're getting that.
They're just doing it.
No, no.
Because it's just a recommendation.
You're looking for a recommendation. You are not looking for a permit. So, no, you are not, um.
That will help us move, move things along.
They're gonna wanna bite at the apple, so they're gonna be happy to move this along, I think, as quick, as quick as they can.
This board, this board, I think, is giving you the message that they would like the planning board to do a review, so.
Right, I get it.
I think I would do whatever I could do to have the entire planning board or, or as many members as possible review this at a, at a public meeting.
No, I, and I understand. I'm just saying, some, some of that is out of our control.
They don't show up.
And the, the quorum issues have extended, uh, time on other projects that I've been involved with.
Apparently.
They indicated they wanna facilitate help zoning.
Apparently, though, the gentleman from planning, what was his name?
Uh, Rob.
Rob. He obviously has a whole list of concerns.
Right.
And you think it might be beneficial to expedite everything, perhaps maybe to get a list of his concerns that we might be able to share with them ahead of time. So when they were dealing with the consultant, they may have saved a month or two.
And get those concerns to the consultant.
Exactly, exactly.
That would help.
You know?
What I, what I will do is I, I will, um, we'll get with Larry Graham, find out his availability. If, Les, I may, I'm working with you and or John on this independently. John is the town planner. Find out Larry's availability to get this done. If it's not gonna him, we'll apply to BSE. If it's not them, we'll notify you guys once you, find out their availability. I will, uh, send a note to, uh, the planning board, letting them know, uh, what the intent is and, and that we voted tonight to do this and we'll do thi, and I will get this done within the next week or so. Not, you know, it's not gonna be January. It's gonna be right away. Um, and that I will suggest to them that any comments they have to date can be forwarded directly to the engineer of choice. That you guys, CCing us, right? That, uh, and, and we'll notify you guys so that you can immediately get your latest set of plans to, you know, the, the person who's gonna be doing this. And so they can start their review right away. And then it'll go from there. But we'll get, we'll get this ball rolling within the next week or two, as quickly as I can do that. I can do that offline, okay?
And you guys will let them know that they have to have a recommendation by April.
Yeah, I mean, I, so I'm gonna defer to you again on this. Is that a reasonable timeframe? Uh, we have until.
We have until June.
Uh, June.
We have until June.
For, for, uh, to close the hearing, is that right?
To, um, to, yes, to close the hearing, to, uh, yes, to close the hearing. I have my timeline right here, sorry. To, uh, to complete the public hearing, we have until June third and then we have forty days to vote. So that's, um, this, that's July thirteenth.
They meet once a month.
The planning board meets once, once a month.
Is that right, Patty?
They meet twice a month, but they haven't been.
Give them January, February, March, recommendation us by April. That's three meetings plus the balance of December, so.
They have stuff that goes on for sixteen.
Yeah, I know.
If it goes till July, I can't make the July meeting. Does that, how does that impact things? If this goes all the way to July for the vote and I'm.
Well, we'll have to just.
We can have a special meeting just to, just to review the decision.
Okay.
It would be, it's a decision, I, I draft a decision and we go over the decision with the conditions and it's voted upon.
Okay. I mean, I can commit to almost every meeting, but maybe not as far out as July.
We could schedule a special meeting if we have to.
Okay, so we have a game plan for site plan review. We've got some, um, information that we need for the next time we meet here. Do we wanna continue this meeting to January or February? I think February, I think you were talking about February.
What do we have in January?
Well, I have, I have, um.
Mellow is continued till.
Well, they gotta do the, I don't know, is that enough?
My new year meeting?
Can they do an analysis by a qualified technical expert for a water resource and.
I mean, personally, I, I think it's fine. If you wanna wait till February, it's fine. You got some other stuff right here.
We have Mellow at seven thirty, January ninth, and they coming in with that traffic plan.
Right.
February.
I mean, we.
Cause then we'll have everything.
If we're ready, we'll, we'll manage it. If February gives you more time to.
Yeah, I'd like to, I, I, you know, if you guys are relying on, on the planning board, I'd like to have a meeting with them before we come back. And we know what you guys are looking for. We can, we can package that up with whatever, whatever we come away from with the planning board and hopefully have a, a productive meeting in February.
Instead of doing two small meetings, have one big meeting in February.
And then my guess is we give them to April.
When is the February meeting?
February sixth.
We'll keep going, but, you know, it's not gonna, at the end of the day, this isn't gonna, it's guaranteed not to extend beyond the typical timeline for a forty B. So you're still getting your expedited process. Uh, you know, you'd still be getting from this board everything you need as far as the, you know, the density and everything else and you get it done on time. Assuming everything goes according to plan. Are there any other questions about what we need from you the next time we meet?
I'm gonna give a check. I have a list of everything you need from us.
Are you all set?
Yes.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to continue this meeting until our next regularly scheduled meeting on February sixth at seven thirty P.M. or immediately following? We, we don't have any other.
No, they would be seven thirty.
Yeah, seven thirty.
We'll make a motion to.
We're not voting.
Oh, that's true.[1790.41]
We gotta, well, we gotta, we have to, uh, we have to vote to continue the hearing. Yeah, all right. So all.
So what we're, I just, I just, I just wanna make sure I understand. So you're gonna come back to us in February, and then in April, when planning board has their meeting, you're gonna come back to us again?
Correct.
So you're willing to do that twice?
Yes.
Hopefully, hopefully they're done before, before April. It could be March, because they meet enough that if we have comments, they need to back down to.
But our deadline to planning is going to be there, is our April meeting.
Back in February, right?
But we have other, we have.
Long day, summer-like.
We have other issue, you guys have other, we have other things that we need to provide to you.
You're clear that that's what we're doing, right?
Yes. But I, we have the list of things we need to prepare for you.
On February.
By February.
Okay.
And we might already have some dealings with.
Sure. And if we can do it all, we will.